April fifteenth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners to order. At this time, I would like to recognize Commissioner David Williams for the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For those so inclined, please bow your head in prayer. Lord, as we commence this public meeting, we ask that you guide us in our deliberations and in our decisions with a spirit of amity and with reason and with wisdom. Amen.
Amen. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is informal comments from the community. We will recognize the speakers signed up for informal comments. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their name, stating whether they are residents of Union County, indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A tone may sound at the conclusion of your remarks. A speaker may not yield any of his or her time to another speaker. Speakers may not discuss matters which are the subject of public hearings, and they must be courteous in their language and presentation. Restatements or repetitive comments by the same speaker, whether at the same or separate meetings, may be ruled out of order and terminated by the chair. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Speakers may leave written comments and/or supporting documents, if any, with the clerk to the board. Our first speaker is Stephen Worgen.
Good evening, folks. My name is Steve Worgen. I am a resident of Union County. I live in the Heritage South subdivision, and my topic this evening is the odor in our community. Thank you for giving me a moment. Many of you might remember me. I've spoken here before with a significantly different demeanor than what I have this evening. It's become crystal clear that we're not getting the support from this body. I have access to some emails from Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Merrill. I've reached out to several entities, and I just want to address that, if I may. For those who don't know, I can tell you that I have a little history with this. Four years, we've been dealing with this. I have personally sat in with more than a half a dozen meetings with our developer, Colter Properties. I have met with the water folks on multiple occasions. I was active and involved with the presentation a few months back on solutions to the odor in our community. Also met with many of the commissioners. Stoney Rushing, I met with multiple times, Richard Helms, and also even Commissioner Williams. And it appears that we're not getting any support on this issue. In two particular points, I'd like to clear up at least my understanding of the players in this. One is Colter's culpability. It's been suggested in previous meetings, I believe by Commissioner Merrill, that you'd like to have Colter involved in the process and like to see where they're at. They have stated on multiple occasions that though in 2017, when the first proposal was put out, there was resistance from the county. They did a workaround, and on multiple occasions, they got approvals. They are adamant. They do not feel culpable, and they will not change their position. I have heard that directly from supervisors, both in Florida and locally from Colter. That's fool's gold. We're not going to get anywhere with that. Secondly, the solutions. I was, I've talked to John over at the Water Department. It was, multiple solutions were provided. Some are major capital projects that the county has not predisposed. In fact, we have an email from Commissioner Williams saying there is no predisposition to want to vote for any of those projects at this time. But there has been a suggestion that the filters have been implemented. Please know that it was never intended as a singular solution. The filters were to be in conjunction with treatment at the source chemically. Alone, those filters have not worked. We have multiple people in these back three rows who can attest to that. The filters are not an adequate solution. We would like, we're asking for this body to please put it to a vote, and would love to know where everybody stands on this particular issue. Interesting, as I have something that it may take me a second longer, but I think it's worth knowing. This came to me anonymously in the mail today. Not signed by anybody, no return. It's a report from 2016 that some of you will be familiar with, if I may. This report is interesting. It's from 2016. It is an update to the 2011 plan. What is the county waiting for? The Heritage subdivision sewer odor is not because of the development. It's because of the Poplin Road force main should have already been taken offline. The Board of Commissioners agreed eight years ago to the strategy in the report, which including building the new Yatkin Basin Treatment Plant. If they had built the plant as they agreed, there would be no odor in Heritage. The county spent 4.6 million in November 2022 for the land for the new treatment plant to show that they are doing something. Then the board voted to lease the property back to the sellers for almost 10 years. This delays the plant 10 more years, and it should have already been finished. The county is not getting, is now, is only getting 3,000 per year from the lease, even though the sellers got 4.65 million. Stoney Rushing pushed this scheme, but current board members Melissa Merrill and Brian Hells were in on it and voted for the lease. This is a real, this is the real odor problem. The county is trying to blame the odor on developers, growth, construction, or design.
Mr. Worgen, Mr. Worgen, your time is up. Thank you, sir.
That came to me, that's not from me, folks. I wasn't here at that time. But I just wanted you to know that was interesting that that came to me today. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ronald Byrus.
My name is Ronald Byrus, and I'm a resident of Union County, and I live on Curling Creek Drive, 1158. And I want to thank you all for listening to me. I Googled a little bit about septic smell. And septic smell is part hydrogen sulfide, ammonia, and methane. And I'm sure none of you want to smell that. Some of it you can't smell. We're a 55 and older community, and a lot of us aren't in the best of health, and this stuff is going to maybe hurt you. In fact, the methane, in enough percentage, can actually kill you in your sleep. So, my wife and I used to call the water and sewer about once a week. And one particular funny one was, she called the one day, and she said about the smell. Well, they've never sent anybody out. They say they would, but they never did. But that day, she said, well, I've looked at all the records, and you're the only people in the development that complain about this, which we all know that's not the truth. My wife actually threatened me that we'd move back to Pennsylvania. We've moved down here to South, or to North Carolina because we wanted to live here. Now, we don't want, we didn't move here to have a septic smell in our house and around our house. I'm going to ask you a question here to think about when I'm done. And would you, your wives, your husband, your children, your grandchildren, would you want them to live in something like that? Or how long would you live in something that smelled like that? This will be my fourth year of living here, and I'd please like to have someone do something about it, because it is a problem, and it could be a health problem to a lot of people. I want to thank you very much for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Deborah Kemper.
Thank you to the members of the commission for allowing me to speak. My name is Deborah Kemper, and I am also a resident of the Heritage South 55-plus active adult community in Indian Trail. I reside at 1149 Curling Creek Drive across the street from Ron. I am also a licensed active North Carolina real estate agent. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today regarding the concerns and requests of our community in regard to the ongoing issue of the sewer smell which you are aware of. I come to you today to ask for a positive resolution to this problem. I am a homeowner who has invested in a home only to find out after moving in that there was a foul smell that surrounds my home and my street. We questioned the smell when we went through our walkthrough, and we were told there was a flap that needed to be changed in the street and that it would be fine. Actually, that was not the case. We believe that our builder did not tell us the truth, and when we closed in 2019, as the smell has increased daily and continues today. In 2020, my mother was building a house down the street, and I was speaking to the builder rep, and he told me, oh, yeah, down Curling Creek, there was a problem years ago. In fact, the smell was so bad that they stopped building your home because the workers walked off the job. So that was a concern immediately to me. I also am concerned as a licensed Realtor, who has also invested in a home, who knows that this smell and this problem will cause devaluation in the future, if it's not causing it already, to our community, especially when the problem needs to be disclosed to a potential homeowner. Now, some people question whether that's the truth, but we do have the North Carolina Residential Property Disclosure that everyone who is selling a home needs to answer the questions truthfully to the best of their ability. And one of the questions on number 26 says, is there any noise, odor, or smoke from commercial, industrial, or military sources which affects the property? So in good conscience, can you really sell your home and not tell somebody that there is an ongoing sewer smell? We have people coming over to our house since the day we moved in, questioning why our house smells like a sewer. I've had my children, family members. It's quite upsetting when you're sitting in your dining room, and you smell a foul smell coming in the front of the house, and you're like, why would I want to invest any more money in this home? Because it's a problem. So there are solutions on the table, and I request, as a Union County voter and taxpayer, that our concerns be given the attention they deserve. I respectfully ask for you to understand the need for this to be resolved. I respectfully ask for you to understand the negative impact that this has on our community, and I respectfully ask for you to vote yes to one of the solutions on the table. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Suzanne Mears.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Mears, and I also live in Heritage South Community in Indian Trail. I am not here to talk about odor. I am here to talk about toxic fumes. Odor, to me, is a symptom. It can be a warning. If I open my refrigerator and there's a terrible odor, I know there's something in there that needs to be thrown out, or it can cause a health issue. So what is the cause of the odor? Sewer gases. That's already been established. And as someone mentioned earlier, sewer gases are made actually of five different gases. Hydrogen sulfide, that's the rotaine, methane, ammonia, hydrogen, and nitrogen. When these gases are put together, they can cause severe health problems. Everything from burning eyes to failed organs. Methane and hydrogen sulfide are extremely flammable. So I would ask you to picture a spark coming from a backyard barbecue, or maybe somebody's using a circular saw in their backyard, and a spark is carried by the wind down into the ravine where these toxic fumes are seeping. Flammable, instant explosion. That's a possibility. So we're talking about health issues. We're talking about safety issues. And maybe to give a better understanding of how I feel about this, let's say a truck is driving down Curling Creek Drive, which is the street in question, and it's carrying the big tank of the same five gases that I've mentioned, in the same concentrations that are seeping out from the ravines behind the homeowners. Something happens to the truck. It falls on its side. The tank is, what, broken? And those same gases are seeping from the tank on Curling Creek Drive. What happens? Our wonderful fire department, our wonderful sheriff's department, and I would guess a hazmat team, would all rush to the scene. The hazmat team would be charged with recording data. What are the concentrations of the gas? What directions are the winds flowing in, and what is the speed of the wind? And how long will this exposure last? We can say, from what you've heard tonight, this exposure has lasted for four years. So what I ask of you, please, I'm pleading, please don't think of this as, ah, the odor issue from the 55 and older group. Yeah, no, this is not an odor issue. This is a health and safety hazard. You have options. Please choose one. Get it done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Rochelle Kilman. All right, our next speaker is Piedade Roldan.
Commissioners, good afternoon. My name is Piedade Roldan. I am a resident of Union County, and I live in the Heritage South Community in Indian Trail. I'm here to speak about the fetid sewer odor in our community. My neighbors and I have been living with this horrendous smell for years. Many of them have experienced this unhealthy situation for more than four years. This is the time of the year when we would love to enjoy some of the simple things in life, such as sit outside, sip a cup of coffee, have a refreshing drink, enjoy time with neighbors and friends. We, however, are never certain that we can do any of this. We would like to know when one of the three solutions provided to Union County will be decided on. We are hopeful that there will be a solution to our problem soon. We need to be able to breathe clean air inside and outside of our homes. We know the solution is within your power. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Georgianne Ecclestone.
Hello. My name is Georgianne Ecclestone. I'm a resident of Union County, and I live in the Heritage Development in Indian Trail. I'm here to speak about resolving the sewer odor problem in my community. First, I'd like to state some facts. Heritage is a fairly new development, about four years old. The odor is the result of sewer gas building up in the sewer line and being released through a manhole cover and backing up through toilets inside residents' homes. The sewer system was constructed and is working as designed. This is not a construction error. The design was approved for our community by Union County. The developer, Colter Land Management, was advised that there could be a problem with an odor. So let me restate. I'm just listing the facts here. All the above are facts, and the design, which the county knew in advance could result in a problem with sewer odor, was approved by our comme- community, excuse me, approved for our community by Union County. All are facts. Here are some more facts. A few months back, Union County Water and Sewer did their due diligence, acknowledged that they approved the design, acknowledged that there is a problem, and proposed a two-step solution to this board. That was good news for our community. The perception was that relief is on the way, and that's also a fact. We were glad that a solution was found. Here's the solution as I understand it. Step one is diluting and treating the waste at a pumping, pumping station prior to it entering our community. Step two is using filters at the manhole to reduce the remaining sewer odor. Both steps are required to manage the sewer odor. Both steps are required to manage the sewer odor. To date, only step two, filters at the manhole, has been implemented. However, both steps are required to manage the sewer odor. Now, I'd like to talk about the result of the decisions made by Union County to date. The decisions were to approve the sewer design, that's a fact, and it appears that there is another decision in progress to only implement new filters at the manhole, which does not resolve the problem that was caused by Union County's first decision. We are your constituents, and we hope that you will reconsider what appears to be the board's fallback decision to not assist us in this matter. We are aware that resources are required to implement step one of the solution, but that is what was recommended by the Engineering Department of Union County, and we hope that you will approve, fund, and implement it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Rich Kempton.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Rich Kemper. I'm a resident of Union County. I live in Heritage South in Indian Trail at 1149 Curling Creek Drive since 2020. I'm here to speak about the sewer odor, as many of these people here tonight are. Our neighborhood has been plagued by this odor since 2020, over four years. I'm a member of the HOA Advisory Committee that has been working with multiple constituents, attempting to get a solution implemented to this problem. This includes Union County, Wesley Chapel, Indian Trail, Colter, the two builders in the community. And we've, I think, been in a partnership mode, trying to find this solution. We've played nice. We've done everything that we're asked to do. We've met with commissioners at Sun Valley Cafe. We've had long meetings there. And I'm convinced that out of that group of constituents that I met, nobody's willing to stand up and take accountability. I'm not looking for somebody to blame, but what I can tell you is, there is no blame on the part of the homeowners that are in Heritage South. We're not to blame. We're just looking for a solution. And I'm calling on you to do your job and implement one of the three solutions that came your way several months ago. It's pretty simple. We're not asking for you major capital contributions and investments, the second two of the options that were laid on the table. We just, like Georgianne said, we'd like to have the filters, and we'd like to have the sewage done at the, managed at the entry point to our neighborhood so that the smell is dissipated. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Terry Assad.
Good evening. My name is Terry Assad. I live on Curling Creek Drive in Indian, Indian Trail, Heritage South. And as everybody else has said earlier, and I'm not going to try to repeat a lot of that stuff, but I'll just give a quick little story from yesterday. Walking down the middle of Curling Creek with my granddaughter, three years old, and her mom. A three-year-old says, Grandpa, what's that smell? And I turned to my daughter and said politely, you know what it is. I mean, that's embarrassing. You can't go outside. And I invite any one of you at any night to come to our house when it's nice and warm outside, no breeze, and smell it. We've talked, I'm part of the advisory committee. I'm not going to go through all that stuff everybody else has said. All we're looking for is a solution that works. And if anything has been done to this point, it has not worked. If you have changed filters, if you've done whatever chemical things, it is not working as of yesterday. That's as current as I can get with the news. You have a budget. I understand the budget. You've had the budget for months. I've lived there for four years, and we're going no place. We're going in a circle. Please give us a solution, either a yes or no, so we can move forward one way or the other, with or without your help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Jeff Carroll.
My name is Jeff Carroll. I live in, reside in Union County in Minto Springs. I live in Waxo Meadows Plantation. Right now, I feel like a preacher, with everything being thrown at me in my head and don't know where I need to go, what angle I need to go with this. But I'm here to talk about the Parkway. And I moved in Waxo Meadows Plantation because I, as a child, I was, I was fortunate enough to meet a man named CJ Squires in Stiles, North Carolina. I grew up here. I love this county. And this man put me in the truck with him, showed me the ropes of feeding animals, doing all these different things around the farm. And he was just a great individual, and I thought dearly of this man. But anyway, I've moved to Waxo Meadows Plantation. It's a 200-acre piece of property right off Collins Road. Back in the day when the parkway was talked about, there was only maybe two or three homes back in this neighborhood. Plenty of room to push it through there if that's what they wanted. But now it's been all developed out. If you drive through there, everybody has like 10-acre tract. We're very strict on what we want, but everybody's got their own homes, got their own barns. They got their own yards, all fenced in. And there's several of them that rescues horses and different animals all over the United States. I feel privileged to be a part, and this is some of them sitting here now, to be part of that. Sometimes you go in a neighborhood, you look at the houses. Do I want to live here? And I look at these houses. But when I came in Waxo Meadows, I met these people, and I saw the love they have for this land. And I had a man tell me, he's not here tonight. He's got prostate cancer. He cannot be here. He wanted to. I asked him, I says, I'm fixing to bring my father-in-law here. He's 89. And I said, I'm bringing my son and his wife and my two grandkids here. I said, if there's anything crazy here, let me know now before I make this decision. He said, Jeff, he said, this is the closest to heaven I've ever been in my life, and this man's 83 years old. And he lives there, and he lives right beside me. And I'm fortunate enough to be with this man also. What I'm saying is, they're trying to put this Parkway now through this neighborhood, which would devalue everything that's there. We've got, this guy right here has only been in this house. I bet he made four payments on this house. And they're trying to push this thing through his house. Nobody told him anything about permits or anything, that this was there. It's hard for me to look at him. I'm the president of the association. We were not aware of this when we moved there, and all these people that's built, they're all aware of it now. We're not saying we're against the Parkway as a sense. We have Collins Road, you've got 75, you've got Collins Road, and you've got McNegley that goes all the way around this piece of property. There's ways around it, and we would love to help do that. There's no need to come through this neighborhood and divide us into two. There's no way to get around, to navigate around. Got Blithe Creek on one side, 75 railroad tracks. It's just a little pie there. But I would love you to come and go right out there with us, walk this property, and just see what's, before you make a decision on what you want to do with the Parkway, please walk with us on this property to see what we live in and look at all the options that there are. there are out there for us. That's what I would love to see you do. Thank you.
Thank you sir. The next speaker is Ann Yocum.
That's okay. Thank you. My name is Ann Yocum. I'm a resident of Union County. I too live in Waxaw Meadows Plantation, and I've been a proud member of Union County since I moved here in 2005. I'm a retired school teacher. I moved out here for the land opportunity to be in an area where I'm not hearing traffic all the time. When I moved into this community, I was the third homeowner. There were only three of us living out there at the time. Now, all the parcels are sold. We have, all homes are built with the exception of two pieces of property. It was first designed in the restrictive covenants as a equestrian community. So, we all have animals, it's all very peaceful, it's a beautiful place to live. My children and grandchildren have moved in onto the property also. We're very family-oriented. Within this community, we have old growth trees, we have Indian burial grounds and cooking sites, and we have endangered species. As far as conservation goes, it's an idyllic place. Jeff stated our position very clearly, and I'm not going to repeat all of that, but I'm asking you all not to disturb this treasured piece of land, and I invite each and every one of you out there to come through and see what we really have on those 200 acres. Thank you so much.
Thank you ma'am. Our next speaker is Bill Boone.
My name is Bill Boone. I'm a resident of Union County. I'm also a resident of Heritage subdivision. My wife and I moved in there in April of 2020, and shortly after we moved in, we started getting that smell. It was hard for us to sit on our front porch and our back porch to have a nice evening to ourselves, then listening to all the others as they had their issues with the smell. When we retired, we moved up from Atlanta and hoping to get into a great neighborhood, which we did. We moved into a great neighborhood, but didn't realize the problems that we would incur down the road. So, what I'm asking, I don't think the residents are asking for a whole lot, we just want someone to step up and take ownership and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Our next speaker is Mike Davis.
Good evening. My name is Mike Davis. I live in Heritage South, Union County. Been a resident of Union County for 22 years. I'm here to speak about the odor. It's a broken record. Real quickly, the points I want to make, one of the neighbors had correspondence with two of the board members, and I wanted to respond to what she was given. One inquiry was sent to Ms. Merrill, and her response was, "No indication from the developer that they will assist with a treatment option or relocation of the pipe." Number one, it's not as simple as relocating a pipe. This makes me wonder how much attention was paid when your options were presented. It's much more than a pipe. Putting filters on a sewer system is like putting perfume on a pig. It's a Band-Aid, and its only purpose is to try to disguise what was really known as an inferior infrastructure design, plain and simple. Of course, the developer, Colter, in this case, is not willing to participate in the fix. Heck, y'all own it, and y'all not willing to fix it either. When Union County indirectly or indirectly permitted this design and installation, regardless of any mention suggesting it was not recommended or may not work, guess what? Colter got just what they needed, a permit. And congratulations to Union County. From that day on, they became the proud owner of an inferior sewer system and the associated cost of owning such. Colter probably laughed all the way to the bank. Bottom line, county approved, Colter declared. The second email came from Mr. Williams, response to one of the other neighbors. It was said, "Inserts under the manhole covers have recently been implemented." It went on to say, "I hope this helps improve the odor." Really? Does this board really convey to us that now they just simply hope this situation is improved, and even that it might just go away? Is this the best we get for our tax dollars? Have your water and sewer engineer outlined the facts and clearly proved that at best the particle counts in our system were bad, and that at worst, they were basically off the chart? Or was it in the intent all along to hope that like the smell, we would go away? Few years back, I met a former Colter superintendent, project manager, I don't know his name or anything, he was openly displeased with the style that they operated with and finally reached the point to decide to resign and not subject his standards to theirs. Perhaps someone in the county should have been as concerned, conscientious, and astute in realizing who or what they were dealing with. At this point, it looks like the infamous case of the tail wagging the dog. You have the codes and standards and requirements, and are 100% obligated to enforce them to protect the tax-paying citizens in Union County. Instead, it appears that those who were involved got sold a bill of goods or were given other tidbits of encouragement until finally the permitting was done. And unlike our sewer byproducts, it's pretty much gone straight downhill for us ever since. We residents, homeowners, and taxpayers have been calm and respectful thus far, and had been encouraged that as a board and because of the lose-lose position we've been put in, you would make good on what allowed, was allowed to be passed along to us and all other future homeowners. You know, don't mistake kindness for weakness. We're not going away. We're more united than ever to get this fixed. Some current residents will likely be willing and openly sharing our issues with any prospective new home buyers in the next section Colter is about to kick off in their neighborhood. Which brings me to another point. Have y'all got hoodwinked doing round one with Colter? How could you possibly allow this crowd to continue to expose even more homeowners in Union County? In closing, to me personally, sewer odor is not the only thing that's beginning to smell bad now. I wish you all would kindly go back to the report issued by the engineer, the solutions that have been paid for, if what Steve presented earlier is any substance to it. We've got bigger problems. Thank you.
Thanks sir. Our next speaker is Jen Sanders.
I'm here to talk about public education, though everything they say here is super important, and I apologize, I'm getting over bronchitis, so. So, North Carolina legislators are currently discussing adding $300 million more on top of the existing $500 million already allotted to the voucher program. That is just shy of $1 billion of our tax dollars that should be going to public education. According to Speaker Tim Moore, he said, "But we have the money. The savings reserve has money set aside." This money, voucher money, goes to private and religious schools, like the $1 million plus that Bible Baptist Tappernacle Church in Monroe, who gets public-supported money, who actually talks about supporting rape and corporal punishment, as well as Shining Light, who gets $2.1 million a year of voucher money that could be going to Union County schools. The vouchers were designed to help our lower-income families, many from our BIPOC communities, to have an equal opportunity and fair education. Since most Title I schools and underfunded ones are in our poorer communities, who do you think benefits from these programs? 55% of the voucher requests make over $115,000 a year. 25% of the applicants make over $250,000 a year. Does that seem fair? Does that make sense? Did you know that one in nine teachers are leaving our profession from last year? And instead of recruiting and retaining our teachers, our Republican legislators have dismantled these programs. We rank number 46 in starting pay for our teachers. It doesn't even discuss what it does to our veteran teachers. Now, our current county supplements are lacking, and I did sit in on the meeting, the joint meeting, I thought it was really great, but we're currently taking in consideration that competing against other districts locally, we are going to have a mass exodus of teachers. Yes, we love our low taxes, but with all the advanced growth here in Union County, we can't expect to have the best school system if we're not willing to pay for it. We all brag about how great UCS is, and we all are very proud of our school system, but if we don't fund it, then there's no reason for people to move here and to be involved in the schools. So, I would just like to add a little bit about what was mentioned at our, at the last Board of Ed meeting, and I thought it was really fantastic. The $4.8 million it looks like that we may get from you guys for supplements, now we understand that there are three levels, federal, state, and local. We are asking that this board, that you guys publicly speak up to your legislators in Raleigh and tell them to support public education, period. Without public education, there's no way to teach our children how to be better humans and to educate our students. So, we're asking you, we're going to be putting out a resolution, and we're presenting to both the Board of Ed and to you guys, and ask you to publicly stand up for public education in Union County. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Amanda Stanford.
I'm Dr. Amanda Stanford. I've been a resident of Union County for 10 years. I live in Indian Trail. A lot of people think that the words morality and ethics are synonyms. They are not. Morality is defined as a particular system of values and principles of conduct held by a specific person or society. Ethics, derived from the Greek word ethos, means a way of living and is a branch of philosophy that is concerned with human conduct, more specifically, the behavior of individuals in society. Simply put, morals are what you think, and ethics are what you do. If my morals are that I believe in the values of hard work, integrity, and rights for all, and I join a group of people called Change for Monroe, and we create community gardens, fundraise for foster kids, and volunteer at food pantries, then my ethics, what I do, match my morals, what I believe. I'm explaining this difference because these words are often used interchangeably, but the difference between them is an entire universe. One is private and the other is public. Our thoughts are our own, but it is our actions that we're held responsible for. What I'm going to read to you is taken directly from a post on April the 10th, shared by Mayor Robert Burns, on his official page, as he shared and commented on an official post from the official social media page of the city of Monroe, North Carolina. It reads, "We had excellent meetings last night. I'm very thankful for the direction the city is going. We are making serious progress. God is good. Mark 16, 17 through 18," which states, "And these signs shall follow them that believe in my name shall they cast out devils; they shall speak with new tongues; they shall take up serpents; and if they drink any deadly thing, it shall not hurt them; they shall lay hands on the sick, and they shall recover." Now, I'm not a political scientist, and I do understand that the separation of church and state is a principle, and is not enshrined in the Constitution itself, and therefore open to interpretation. However, the First Amendment's very clear. It states, "Congress shall make no law respecting and establishment of religion." When you accept the responsibility of governing in the United States of America, you govern all of us, because if you only represent the chosen few, that makes you the villain. Remember, it's on Spider-Man. With great power comes great responsibility. So, when you have to bust people in who live nowhere near Monroe, from Waxahaw or Locust, to stir up the mayor, who then uses his public platform as mayor, to threaten the people who lived their entire lives in Monroe with, of all things, a Bible verse, something is broken, because the First Amendment is very clear, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion." Using your religion to scapegoat an entire segment of our community, inciting violence toward them for political gain is simply unethical, and according to the First Amendment, it's unlawful as well.
Thank you ma'am. Our next speaker is Elder Edwin Eglum.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, to the Commissioners, to Ms. West, Clerk, to the County Manager, to the Attorney, to the staff, and above all, the citizens. But Paul cried out with a loud voice, saying, "Do thyself no harm, for we all are still here." Acts of the Apostles, 1628. Cicero said, "More is lost by indecision than wrong decision." L. Ron Hubbard said, "Inaction and indecision in the present is because of fear of consequences of the future." The red wall is stealing us, the taxpayers, blind, plain and simple. Knowing and waiting to cover up the inevitable is bad business. This 16th day of the Easter season, I was out of town last meeting on Monday, April the 1st, April Fool's Day, and what I listened to seemed to have been a crime. For the red wall to stonewall this county's citizens and to kowtow to the few, the 12% that vote minus those with reason, are allowing you to rob us all blind. To pretend you are looking out for the taxpayers of this county is just not true. You alone have put us on this course to raise everyone's taxes, and trying to wait for the revale to hide this is not fair to the voters and is not right. Not to mention the seemingly human rights issues and offenses being perpetrated on the jail population. While the leaders there have sounded the alarm about the injustices of walking in, sleeping in, and eating in filth at the cost of $6 million plus a year, to put a Band-Aid on things there is not right, regardless of what they have done, what they look like, and what their party affiliation might be. We all know they don't vote for you. Many of them may not look like you, but they are human beings too. The feds and the state of North Carolina should be looking at this political control, this stagnation of decisions here, this mess, and intentional like of making decisions by the same board as a farce. Action is needed to save millions of dollars. You are not servicing all of Union County. You ought to put your boots on and just do your job. To the people of Union County, the jail issue and the board not taking action seems to be a crime, as stated. It seems to be, in one word, just filth. I suggest you spend 24 to 36 hours under the same conditions at the jail. What I heard on April 1st was horrible. Even if they cleaned up the words for the public stomach, and they actually gave small sound bites for mental consumption, the jail still has to be built. As I close, your behavior may be a crime. 70-year-olds are leaving Union County. 20 to 35-year-olds are moving to more progressive locales. Business metrics are off, retail sales are off, school funding is only just being made for your base, but you tax us anyway, hiding in the games. I'm asking you, that every legal mind should be watching this. Judging this jail population is inhumane, and waiting to mask the tax increase is robbing us all blind over bad politics and bias. Take action. Stop pretending in your indecision, and I mean that all with respect. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Our next speaker is Frank Capella.
I'm Frank Capella, Union County resident. Good evening. I'd like to speak about the county's 2050 comprehensive plan. I understand this board is currently considering a very large, high-density project. I won't speak about that, but perhaps it's important to revisit a few items from the county's 2050 plan. Regarding stormwater, the 2050 plan states the following strategies are included in the plan to mitigate stormwater impacts of development. Preserving wetlands can reduce the impact of flooding. Also, lowering density for major subdivisions in rural areas to increase buffers along streams and wetlands. Regarding donut holes, the plan states, "Identify these donut holes and establish a policy of Union County to not approve rezonings that would increase density or intensity of uses. The property owners would be advised to propose developments to the adjacent municipality for rezoning and annexation." The 2050 plan concludes, it states, quote, "Stormwater and inconsistent development patterns along corridors are best addressed through the development process. Higher-density development isn't appropriate everywhere in the county, and that rural character and a thriving agricultural industry is central to what makes Union County special." For Western Union County, overdevelopment has done great damage. High density isn't compatible with our road infrastructure, it's harming our natural open spaces, making traffic unbearable, and causing consistent flooding. I've lived here for 17 years, and this is not about being anti-growth. I've always said if it wasn't for development, I wouldn't be here. So, in closing, I'll leave you with this. In the last few election cycles, if you- been elected by wide margins on the central promise to address high-density development concerns. This means the community is now counting on consistent and responsible decisions from these elected officials, especially when it comes to vetting these massive developments, judging whether they'll add to a community's beauty or add to its misery. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other speakers who've not signed up who wish to speak? Hearing none, we'll now move on to the next item on our agenda. The next item is consideration of the agenda and consent agenda. If there's no objection, we're going to move item 24254, Task Order for Architectural Services for the Simpson Event Center Support Building from tonight's business agenda to a future meeting agenda. Are there any other revisions requested to this agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
We're now at the business portion of our agenda. The first item of business is item 24251, rezoning case number 2022 CZ009 Dixon Farm. I will recognize Bjorn Hansen, Senior Planner for this item.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Andrew Matthews, this is an update from two meetings ago, where you conducted a public hearing for a rezoning. It's called Dixon Farm. This is a conditional rezoning. It's to rezone approximately 179 acres along NC 84, east of Airport Road, to R4 with conditions to build an age-restricted community with approximately 400 homes. The key piece of information that you asked for, the reason why it's back tonight as opposed to two weeks ago, was for a stormwater study to be conducted. The applicant has completed that study, and they're prepared to present the results as a re- Screen just went out. I'll just go off of this one. So as a reminder, this is just south of St. John's Forest, and has this configuration with two access points. Since that meeting, the site plan has not changed. We've received two pieces of, of public comments since then, both from St. John's Forest residents who are in support of the rezoning. Otherwise, if you do not have any questions, I would turn it over to the development team to present the results of the stormwater study.
Bjorn, can you help me get back to the home screen? Not sure which one's yours. Here, I can get it from here.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Shannon Bowling, and I'm with David Weekly Holmes. It's good to see everyone again. Tonight, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present our updates to the Board, and I have a, a team of people with me tonight I want to recognize. Have Peggy Hay also with David Weekly, Mark Keim and Mason Greason with our engineering firm CEC, and Michael Wickline with our traffic engineering firm DRG. Just a quick explanation, I've got a few slides to run through, and want to hit the topics of conversation that we've had over the rezoning process, and then also the main event, the stormwater conversation. I'll bring Mason Greason, our civil engineer, up here to talk about that in just a few Just a brief summary, as, as we started on this rezoning efforts back in February of, gosh, '23, we've had three neighborhood meetings. Some of our input from the neighbors required an enhanced buffer on the east side, and I will just kind of point that out with the cursor. We've committed to a 50-foot enhanced buffer on the east side. We also committed to moving our stormwater ponds to the west side. We also committed to a minimum lot size along the east side. In one of those meetings, the St. John's Forest folks were in attendance, and we talked about the traffic improvements, and they mentioned the issues they had with accessing Highway 84 in the mornings, just trying to get out of their neighborhood. And there's a roundabout, you can kind of see the roundabout here. That roundabout's about 600 feet off the road, and it was told to us that in the morning sometimes the traffic would stack up all the way to their roundabout. So with the traffic improvement suggested, let me go to that slide. To signalize interchange, they also asked for a turn lane to help exit their community. So we have worked with them, and we're glad to say that as of last week, we have assigned memorandum of understanding with them to where we can, with the right-of-way that they have, and with a little bit extra room with an easement, we can put in an additional lane, and then redo their planting strip and street trees, sidewalk, to give them an extra way out of the community. That gives, that will reduce that stacking down from just a stoplight along, would make it 200 feet, and with the additional turn lane, it gets it under 200 feet. It's, our traffic engineer is here, he can confirm that, but it's, it's just a little bit less than 100 feet on the stacking. Another main topic of discussion early on was the impact on schools. And as of last fall, we've made the commitment to make this an age-restricted community, to have zero impact on Union County public schools, and to dramatically decrease the, the traffic impact on the roads. There is a difference between age-restricted communities and age-targeted communities, and what we're proposing is an age-restricted community, which would mean to, every buyer of every home has to have a qualifying buyer that's 55 or better. And we also have in our CCNRs that the minimum age for a non-qualifying resident, a full-time resident, is 25 years old. So grandkids can visit, but they can't live there full-time. And if you're under, if you're under 25, there's 90 days cumulative through the, through the whole year that you can visit, but we're willing to, you know, and we're doing that on our Cuthbertson Road community today in our CCNR. So we, we go above and beyond the, the federal statute when we restrict our communities. I think, I think one of the other things that we, that we talked about pretty early was, was density. And I just want to bring up this site plan, and just to, just to look at our community, we're look, we have about a 2.1 unit per acre density. If you look at the surrounding communities, communities to our north, Weddington Point and St. John's Forest, they are higher than 2.1. I want to say Weddington Point, I have to look to my engineers for this, but I think Weddington Point's about 2.7? 2.7. St. John's Forest is above 3, and to our west, we have Creeks Landing. I want to say that's 1.7. But just comparing density is like comparing an orange and an apple. You have to look at our density with the conditions and restrictions that we are willing to make in this rezoning. Our conditions are the age restriction, number one. That's the traffic impact, that's the school impact. But this is a good segue to our stormwater commitment of detaining a 100-year storm event. That's what we've been studying for the past two, two and a half weeks. I'm going to get Mason to come up here and, and help me with presenting that, because he's a lot more technical than I am.
It's good to see you again. And thank you again for giving us the time to analyze and work with staff, and again, I want to thank staff for their availability and input on this analysis. I want to break down, so the, the request at the last meeting was basically to study the drainage area pattern, basically the tire basin that contributes up to the Potter Road culvert crossing, which is just south of Potter Trace subdivision exit onto Potter Road. And the main focus was, what does the Dixon Farm site do as a post-developed condition to add or subtract or reduce to the overall flooding concerns that was there? The overall basin itself is just over 5,000 acres, and as you can see here, it's broken down into two drainage patterns. The drainage area is here for the East Fork, the main spine, and obviously where the Dixon Farm site is to the south is tributary 3 of the East Fork. This one, we worked with staff, we broke it out to make it a little more legible and actually accurate, instead of running a full basin analysis and adding data into it. Drainage Area 1 is going to be basically our Potter Trace drainage area, and Potter Road will be our, our drainage area 2. But utilizing available data from GIS, aerial soil surveys, NOAA rainfall data, we analyzed the basins using HydroCAD software and WinTR-55 to help us produce flow rates. So in here, we're going to give you an overall little detail. You can see in the pink areas there is, the point of interest is down at the Potter Road culvert, existing culvert. This culvert, we went out and measured it. It is a dual 13-by-12 concrete box culverts that are, is currently under Potter Road and maintained and operated by NC DOT. Wanted to explain a little background on the curve number, which those are based off of the Natural Resources Conservation Service. The general definition for it, it's related to establishing a curve number helps us kind of identify the land use and flow rates that are going across this. It's related to land use, land treatment, hydrologic condition, hydrological soil groups, and soil moisture conditions in the drainage basin. So after we ran the analysis, based on that data, you can see the weighted curve number, what we do is combine each use, land use, has its own curve number, and it gives a weighted average of combining all of those into a weighted curve number. A predeveloped condition with Dixon Farm and its current state as an agricultural, we have a weighted curve number of 80. Adding in a post-developed condition, based on the impervious area proposed, which is about 32% of our site for our post-condition, the, we actually go up one point there. So our curve number increases from 80 to 81. Why that's important is it kind of shows you the overall impact in our overall drainage basin flow results. The predeveloped flows with agricultural state of Dixon Farm is about 9,350 cubic feet per second, and one gallon is about 7.48 CFS. The post-developed flow with no detention, we ran the analysis, so we have no detention facilities whatsoever, just to show what that increase is, and it increases the flow rates by about 52 CFS. Now, as we committed to previously, we are committed to detain and release the detention of the 100-year storm events. Keep in mind, this analysis is only considering the 100-year storm events as a worst-case scenario, so there is no fluctuation between those. We actually show a reduction of about 99 CFS just through that process, which actually reduces the overall flows to the point of interest, so at the culvert. On top of that, we also took an idea of what's the issue with the flooding, let's kind of look into it if we could quickly, and we did find, we ran a culvert analysis on the Potter Road culvert, and it did kind of concur that, and even in a 10-year storm event, it's undersized. It overtops by about five inches, five, six inches. And this, this picture here actually helps you understand that inundation in the areas outside of the Potter Trace subdivision. And a 100-year storm event, it's obviously, what you would imagine, is, is much worse. It inundates, you know, anywhere up to five, six feet from that system. But beyond that, that is, that is our findings off the analysis, and again, we thank you for allowing us the time to do that analysis and provide the information to you. I'll turn that back to your chair.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mason, for that. You definitely did a better job than I could have done. I just want to go back to a couple of things, if we could just look at the site plan for just a second. And I want to talk about, I want to use the word "high density," because we hear that a lot, and high-density impacts. I think we need to look at the density of the proposed Dixon Farm at 2.1 with the conditions, and talk about the impacts. We do not have high-density impacts for this project. With the, detaining the 100-year storm event with our stormwater facilities, I, I think we've done a really good job of meeting slash succeeding the ordinance, and actually meeting what a low-density development would, would have. Our impervious for the proposed community is, impervious would be 32%. That is not high-density development. A typical two-to-three-acre density project is, you're going to be looking at 50% impervious, and that's without the additional conditions that we have. So I just wanted to call that out. In closing, we feel like every opportunity that we've had to partner and negotiate, we think we've met that, and we are here for questions that the Board may have, and we thank you for your time again.
Any questions for Mr. Bowling? Any questions for Mr. Hanson? Thank you, sir. Mr. Vice Chair.
Yeah, I would like to say that I, I agree. I believe that David Weekly Holmes has, as Mr. Bowling mentioned, taken every opportunity to work with staff, and I'm certainly appreciative of that. I certainly appreciate as well the fact that, you know, you guys came back to us with the information that, that we had requested. And so, so with that, I wanted to express my, my gratitude, because I feel like you guys have been responsible with the, with the requests that we've made up to this point. You know, with that, I've still got concerns, you know, over this project. One of the concerns, obviously, I, I'm still concerned about stormwater, and, and I realize that, you know, you guys have increased the mitigation there with stormwater. Originally, I believe it was proposed that we were looking at 25-year mitigation, now we're looking at 100. With everything that we've experienced here in this county as of late with stormwater, that remains at the top of my consideration. There's also concerns with traffic, and I say this, understanding that you guys have submitted, you know, certainly, you know, a plan to mitigate to the best of your ability, well, mitigate the traffic there on Highway 84. My concern lies further down towards Potter, so Potter and 84. My concern also lies with, well, secondary roads that might have traffic traveling towards Monroe, so that would be another concern of mine. This right here was, was sort of be situated between, in my opinion, a few different bottlenecks when it comes to traffic. So I travel through Potter Road, right there at Wesley Chapel Elementary School almost every single morning, and I see where the traffic backs up. I, I'm not convinced that this would help that situation, because, you know, even with 55 and up restricted communities, and I thought you made a very excellent point, by the way, and I think- and I think that that clears up a lot regarding the 25 years and up. But with the, with the traffic that we're already experiencing at those intersections there with bottlenecks at Potter and 84, as well as further down towards Monroe, you know, with Martin Luther King Jr., personally, you know, I'll be opposed to the project today. So I can't get over those concerns, but I do want to tell you that I certainly appreciate everything that you guys have done as far as coming back to us and working with our
Any further discussion? We're to consider the approval or denial of the rezoning petition. Anyone want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we deny the proposed amendment, and specifically deny rezoning petition CZ-2022-009 submitted by David Weekly Holmes to rezone the property appearing on the tax map as parcels 09-402-011 and 09-402-011G in the Monroe and Senor Ridge townships from R40 to R4 CZ, and adopt the consistency and reasonableness statement for denial.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by. The next item on the agenda is item 24243, Union County Public Schools capital and bond referendum request. I will recognize Beverly Lyles Finance Director to introduce this item.
Thank you. Tonight, we have with us from Union County Public Schools, their Chair Kathy Hantel and their other board member Sarah May, who will actually be presenting this to you all tonight. Following this presentation, I will follow up with the debt models that you have in a separate presentation. Also, tonight, with Union County Public Schools, you have here their Superintendent Dr. Houlihan, their Finance Director Shawna McLam, and their Facilities Director Colin Moore. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask as they go through their presentation. Thank you.
That's all.
This one?
Yes.
Okay. Hi. Thank you all for having us here tonight. We're here to present the 2024 construction bond request. Is it the up here? Down here. Okay, sorry about that. So we have three projects on the construction bond request. The first would be a design for Parkwood High School. That has been basically on our list of projects that we want to do since 2020, and so the cost for the design is $10,705,804. The second project, this is basically the last piece of the puzzle for the Forest Hills cluster, East Union Middle School. We've been wanting to take the current Forest Hills High School. Once the new high school is completed, we would then renovate the current Forest Hills High School and move East Union Middle School onto the same campus with Forest Hills. So that project is $27,567,447. And then basically, the last line item is just program contingency management. So here's a little bit about what the design work would look for for Parkwood High School. It shows the years as far as it was first built in 1960 and all the additions, and this would be built on the same campus as Parkwood on land that we have available. And it would basically be 15 months to complete the design portion of this. East Union Middle School, this is a little bit of information about the renovation that we'd like to do at the current Forest Hills High School. We're in process of getting bids out for the design, since we already got the funds for that last year. And basically, it would be renovating the school, all-new HVAC, all-new electrical, all-new plumbing, and then once they got in to do the design, we'd figure out in terms of, like, I don't know if any of you have been in that school, the cafeteria area for one definitely would need to be renovated, possibly expanded, but we'd have more of those specifics once the design portion is finished. This would also allow East Union and Forest Hills to be on the same campus, they could share the same athletic fields, transportation would be easier, and it would take East Union Middle School off of the main thoroughfare and put it, you know, with its feeder high school. And then, like I said, this is just the contingency, basically to manage the projects, and then if there's any overages that we have to account for. And if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them, or we'll get staff up here.
I would just like to confirm, so the design process has already been completed for East Union Middle?
It's not completed. It's in process.
It's in process.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman. So if you can go back to the Parkwood slide? Thank you. So I want to understand correctly, because I did watch the Board of Education last meeting when this item was discussed, and if I understand correctly, the, the working design now for the new Parkwood High School, that that could entail up to three stories. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I want to ask, what is driving the additional capacity for Parkwood High School in this design for potentially three stories?
I mean, that would definitely be the added zoning that we're seeing specifically in the town of Waxahau. I mean, on estimate, they probably have over 4,000 units in the works, but that's not including Waxahau Polo Grounds, if you're familiar with that, which is at minimum 1,300 units. I mean, if they get the zoning that they are talking about at their developer meeting, that would be 3,900 units, and then couple that in, we're trying to really stay ahead of it, because this school is something that needs to last for 60 years. So, I mean, even if it's not coming within the next five years, you know, just to plan ahead would be, I guess, what we think is the best idea. Yeah, and there's, there's no other high schools in the area that we could, you know, shift people to.
Yeah, I think it's important to, for everyone to know that, you know, this is Parkwood, and also there's some other schools that have been on your list, as I understand it, for quite some time to look at potential replacement in the near future. And when I, when I read over this item, I guess I wanted to get some confirmation, because what I was seeing is, is with the additional development in those western municipalities like Waxahau, that it would force, you know, us to essentially accommodate, you know, student body growth, and if this is already on the list to begin with...
It was.
Yeah. So it, it, I guess is, I guess this is a good example of, you know, what happens when, when we contend with unbridled growth in certain areas of the county. And I think that it needs to be said that, you know, when we make decisions as elected bodies, whether it's at the county level or potentially at the municipality level, that we don't make those decisions in vacuums. And so when I see this item, I'm reminded that growth has a cost, and today, we're entertaining the cost of 10 million for design for Parkwood High School. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it.
So, good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, you have a packet in front of you that may take us a little while to go through with some very important information. So, tonight, you heard from Union County Public Schools and their bond request. At the last meeting, you heard from South Piedmont Community College for their bond request, and you also heard from our jail staff for the need for a new jail. So tonight, we're going to go through a series of debt models with you. We're also going to first talk about the bond referendum process, where we're at in that, and also to go back through the legislative changes for the language that will be required on the ballot and some challenges that come with that. We'll go through the debt model assumptions and what is factored into our models for each one of those, and then you will have different scenarios for the jail. We'll also go over what it means to issue two-thirds obligation bonds for a project we've been discussing. So to begin with, if you want to take your packages apart, this might be easier if you go ahead and do it, because we did print out the debt models on 11 by 17, so it's a little bit easier for you to actually see all the numbers that are on there. But to start with, the first thing that's not in the actual presentation is the full schedule for a bond referendum request and what that looks like. So this timeline shows you that we are already in April. This is where you've received your formal request for bond referendums. We're closely moving into that May and June timeframe, so time is of the essence for us as staff to get some direction and feedback from the board to determine how do we move forward with working with our bond attorneys and our financial advisors to put together the required actual legal documents to start this process. There are some things throughout this process that takes time. There are some waiting periods from when we actually publish the notice of intent in our newspaper, we have to wait 10 days. And with only having one meeting in July, it's also important that we hit all of these deadlines following this meeting, so we are able to file that resolution with the Board of Elections if you so choose to move forward by July 16th. So this is in your packet, and this goes through each single item that requires action from the board and from your staff. So everything in red is an action item that we will need the board to take action on in the timeframe for that. As I said, time is of the essence, and we're moving closely into the May timeframe, and we have to work closely with our bond attorney. They actually put together all of our resolutions and documents that are required for your adoption. I'm not going to go through these individually, but I did want you to have this for reference to understand where we're at in the process and where we're going, and we're going quickly. So let's talk about the new session law that was put into place in 2022. This is the legislative changes for bond referendums and the language that is required. We talked about this briefly at our board retreat, but I wanted you to understand what this actually means and how the local government commission is actually requiring us to show these numbers and what that means for what the language is that's actually going to go on the ballot. So previously, when we had a ballot question, it just simply said, shall the order authorize in a par amount of the bonds plus interest? And it stated the purpose, and that providing the estimated additional taxes would be levied. But it did not show the voters exactly what that true cost was over the life of the entire debt. So the new language, which is the Bond Transparency Act, actually says that you have to use the estimated cumulative cost of, over the life of the bond, using the highest interest rate charged for similar debt over the past 20 years, because we issue 20-years bonds. So the local government commission is looking at that, and they're saying you have to go back 20 years from today to see what the highest interest rate was in the market. And then they're saying, based on that interest rate, you have to show what that service cost would be over the life of the debt to the taxpayer to say, for every $100,000 worth of value, here's your estimated cost of your annual property tax bill going up. So I wanted to break this down for you all, so everybody can have a clear understanding of how I'm showing the debt models with two different scenarios for you. So the first definition, the order authorizing the bond, so that is your full par amount of the bonds for what you're asking to finance. The estimated cumulative cost over the life of the bond, that is your total amount of principal and interest payments added together. Previously, the citizens did not see that, they only saw the par amount of the bond. The highest interest rate for the past 20 years charged for a similar general obligation bond for 20 years, the local government commission is saying you must use this rate, so it's 5.34% over the last 20 years. So if you pay attention to what's going on in the market today, interest rates are not that high, but this law requires us to show it at that rate. So, in my opinion, we're really showing the voters and the citizens the worst-case scenario that's happened in the past 20 years. And then, based on that total cost of principal and interest added together, we have to do the calculation to say, based on every $100,000 of property tax value that you own, this is what your total estimated property tax increase would be on an annual basis. So I wanted to break that down for you all before we move into the debt model, so you understand why we're showing you two different rates compared to what you're used to seeing in the past. Some of the challenges with this new law is that the local government commission has a separate safe harbor policy, and what they require to actually put in our disclosure to them is different than the highest interest rate. So their safe harbor policy is current bond market rates with some cushion built in, which is what you're accustomed to seeing when we actually have presented any debt models in the past. Is there any questions about that before we move on? Clear as mud?
Mr. Chairman. Beverly, so each, what we're seeing here would be, this is the, this is the information that the voter would see, and if we had more than one bond out, you know, for referendum, then each one would be listed like what we're seeing here?
That's correct, and each one has to be listed separate. The bond orders are adopted separate for each function. So you would have a separate one for schools, a separate one for South Piedmont, and a separate one for jail. And it's based on the functionality of the purpose of the bond. So it's community college, public schools, public safety.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
So we built our debt models based on all these assumptions that you see in front of you. So all models assume that all property tax in place would take place in fiscal year 2026 if the referendums are approved. You know, it's estimated we work on through that debt process during fiscal year 25, and you wouldn't have a rate impact until fiscal year 2026. Now, this is how we've built our models. Understand, we would revisit that as these projects start to come to fruition to see when do we actually go to market to issue the bonds. So you have two different models for each scenario of a bond referendum. So the first one is the interest rate at 5.344%, which is based on legislative requirements in that language. And then you have a separate model that is the interest rate at 5%, which is what you're accustomed to seeing in our regular debt models that you've been presented in the past. All models assume a 20-year payoff for all general obligation bonds. All models assume our fiscal year estimated 2025 penny value starts at $4,61814. For each year thereafter, fiscal year 2025 and beyond, starting with 2026, we've estimated and assessed value growth at 3.25%. And we also have to pay service charges to our trustees, so we estimate those annual service charges increases 3% annually based on their rates that go up as well. For the county model only, this model assumes, which we're going to talk about this later on, is that we would do a two-thirds general obligation bond issuance for the judicial center and governmental center renovations and expansion projects that we briefly talked about at the retreat also. And I'll explain later on in this presentation what that means. For the education models only, if you recall, this past fiscal year, we bifurcated out our tax rate. So there's an education debt fund separate from the county debt fund. So we have restricted sales tax articles that we must spend on Union County Public Schools' debt and capital. So these models assume a conservative growth rate for each year after 2025 at 2.5%, which is going back to what we're accustomed to seeing in annualized sales tax growth compared to the spikes that we saw in the most recent previously years. We also receive lottery fund revenue for education debt, and we're estimating that that lottery revenue would grow at only 1%. The education models also accounts for South Piedmont Community College voter-approved bonds that were approved already in FY '22, or actually, the bond referendum took place in '22. We currently have not issued that debt. South Piedmont is still in the design phase for that building for the South Piedmont is still in the design phase for that building for the Center for Entrepreneurship. They are estimating to finalize that design this coming spring, and we would begin to issue those bonds in the spring of 2025, next spring, not this spring we're in. So are there any questions about the assumptions before we move on to the first scenario?
Beverly, regarding the sales tax revenue growth, so how do we derive 2.5%? Can you just expand a little bit? Was that just an average of what we saw prior to the spike during the COVID years?
That is correct, and we actually just had a webinar this past week with the state, with the North Carolina League of Municipalities and the Association of County Commissioners that have people that are dedicated just to working on sales tax assumptions and growth. And what we're seeing is that we're not down compared to where we were last year, but we're seeing a very moderate growth rate now, which is going to normalize out with what we would have seen average prior to COVID and the stimulus money and the economy being boosted.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So this is the first debt model that you have. If you want to pull out your presentation, there's a separate paperclip section that has the 11 by 17s. So I want to go over how each one of these debt models work as we go through this process. So all the way over to the left, you have your funding requirements. So this shows your current existing debt service for the model that you're looking at. For each model that we're proposing new debt, we would drop in the proposed school debt service cost and any service charges associated with that. So the first few columns show your total requirements from an expenditure standpoint for money going out. In the second section, where it shows revenue available for debt service, this calculates the estimated dedicated tax rate revenue from the current tax rate that we have in place today. And then, this is a model for Union County Public Schools. So this one shows lottery proceeds as a revenue source and our sales tax revenue. So if you will recall, this is the first year we've had the schools' debt fund and the education debt fund separate from county debt. So when we started this fund and we opened it up, we put $10 million of the county's fund balance money to start this fund off in FY '24. We also said, when we issued the last debt for the 2023 bonds that were approved by voters in 2022, that bond generated a premium. So we put $9 million of that premium into this fund to help offset a property tax rate increase at that time. We also estimated during the '24 budget process that sales tax would be coming in higher than it actually is, based on where we were at with sales tax projections when we adopted the budget. So understand, this is a cash flow model, not a budget model, module, model, excuse me. So the sales tax revenue projected for FY '24 is $22 million compared to the $24 million budget that we had. So we talked about that in the joint meeting with the board and the school board, that that's going to equate to about a $2.7 million loss in this fund compared to where we thought we were going to be. And we also recognized that when we issued those bonds for 2023, that we did not request a property tax rate increase to cover all of the future debt costs for that, for all the remaining years. So the way the model works is then you have your cash flow surplus or deficit. So anything that's black is in the positive, anything that's red is in the negative. So you can see as you go through the years that, just for the current existing debt, if we don't do anything by FY '26, we're going to have a cash flow problem with Union County Public Schools' debt. So this model indicates for fiscal year '26, we would need a 1-cent tax rate increase to cover the existing debt for Union County Public Schools. And I'm going to stop there and ask if you have any questions before I move on.
Beverly, what have we put in place to make sure we don't overestimate the taxes as we just did?
So we are being a lot more conservative than we previously were with our sales tax projections. Previously, we would have came to you and said, we expect sales tax to grow at 3% to 4%. That's just not coming to fruition today as it was in the past. So we are being a lot more conservative with these estimates than we were to hopefully show this as worst-case scenario. Sales tax is one of the revenues that is so volatile in any county that it's very hard to predict what exactly you're going to collect. We do the best we can based on the facts that we have at the time, but know that we have to update these cash flow models each year to determine where are we at in the future and are there any adjustments that we need to make. If there's no further questions, I'll move along to the second debt model. So the second debt model that you have actually shows all your current existing debt, and this drops in the proposed new debt service cost for the school's request for $39 million. And this model for number two is based on legislative requirements with the interest rate of 5.34. So this model and the next one that you are going to see is the exact same, except the interest rate is different. This is based on legislative requirement. The next model is based on what you're accustomed to seeing for our actual county debt models. So based on current existing debt and dropping in the new debt with the legislative requirements, this debt model is indicating in fiscal year '26, we would need a 1.8 cents increase on property taxes for this request. If we move to the next model, which everything's the exact same, except we're using the county's estimated debt cost, we're at a 1.77 cent property tax rate increase requirement for this particular bond request. And so on the next slide, I actually put together a chart that shows the two compared. And so this shows legislative requirement amount at the top. So you can see I'm breaking down the current debt. So the actual request for this bond adds 0.8 cent that you would have to increase for this particular bond. Below, on the county debt model, based on that estimated cumulative cost of the entire debt over the life of the bond, is 77 cents. So worst-case scenario, you have to show the voters is 80 cent for this particular bond. What we think we would actually need is 77 cents. And so the very far column shows the annual increase to a taxpayer based on $100,000 value of a home. So based on the legislative requirement with the current debt and the new bond request, you're looking at $18.80 per taxpayer for every $100,000 worth of value. For the county model, you're looking at $17.70 for the increase for the annual tax rate. The next slide, if you don't have any questions here, I'll move forward and show. So this actually shows the estimates based on examples of property values. This particular slide is based on all county debt models when you see these, not the legislative requirements. So if you have an average home valued at $350,000, your annual tax increase on your property tax bill would be around $61.95. And as you can see, each increment goes up to show you what the estimated annual impact would be to a property tax owner. Is there any questions about the school's requests before I move forward? So your debt model number four in your slides, this is for South Piedmont Community College. This includes showing their already voter-approved debt plus their new request together. And this is based on our current debt model 5% because we don't have to put that interest rate into place for legislative requirement for bonds that are already previously approved. And then showing the public safety training facility at the legislative requirement of So both assume to be issued in 2025 with a property tax impact in fiscal year '26. This model is indicating that that would be a 1.74 cent tax rate increase for this request. Same model, just moving forward with a 5% interest rate, shows a property tax increase at 1.7 cents. So in summary, based on current voter-approved debt plus their request for $55 million, and based on the legislative requirement, you're looking at a total of 1.74 cents or $17.40 on a annual tax bill increase. For this particular bond alone, it would require 1.32 cents to be shown on the ballot. And then, looking with the county debt model, a total of 1.7 cents, and with the bond request, the increase would be 1.28, or a total of $17 per annual increase on their tax bill. And then this again is the same estimated annual increase in taxes due based on the property values. Are there any questions about South Piedmont before we move forward? So I wanted to briefly talk about two-thirds general obligation bonds before we move into looking at the county debt models. We've discussed at the retreat that there is a need for a judicial center renovation and expanding them into this building and renovating part of this building, and that cost that we need for construction is about $13 million. So the state statute authorizes local governments to issue two-thirds general obligation bonds as a financing tool for long-term capital needs. Two-thirds general obligation bonds are issued under a formula that the state sets, that that calculation is over to the side for us. So it's equivalent to two-thirds of the previous year's net general obligation debt reduction. And that net word is important because if we had issued new bonds in fiscal year '24, we would not qualify to even issue two-thirds bonds in fiscal year '25. But because we have not issued any new debt this year, we are going to show a net reduction of our general obligation bonds principal amount. So for fiscal year '24, for general obligation bonds, we are paying down $28,245 million in general obligation bond principal net reduction. So you take that net reduction and you times it, times two-thirds, and that calculates what your capacity is by state statute to be able to issue in 2025. Our capacity is 18.8 million. But if you'll recall, in some of our previous presentations, in the general fund debt model, our affordability is not a full 18.8 million. So we would not request to issue that and charge that debt to the county debt model because we can't afford it without a tax rate increase. So the idea is, you're paying down your principal, and that qualifies you to issue debt without a property tax rate increase required for that new debt over the new life of the bond because you're paying down current existing debt at the same time that you're issuing new debt. Two-thirds bonds are actually issued in the market, just like any regular general obligation bond would be, using our same credit rating for general obligation bonds, so we get to utilize that for a lower interest cost versus going to the market for an installment financing debt that has a little bit higher interest rate attached to that type of debt. Is there any questions about the two-thirds bond capacity and how we utilize that? So debt model number six that you have in your 11 by 17s, this model shows the county's current existing debt and the proposed debt for issuing two-thirds bonds for $13 million for the judicial center. So what this cash flow model indicates to you is that you have affordability within the county debt fund to be able to issue those two-thirds bonds without a tax rate impact. This is showing the legislative required interest rate, but also, if I showed you the 5% interest rate, of course, you can still afford that because the interest rate is lower. Is there any questions about these two scenarios before we move on?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Fodger.
So maybe this is not a question for you, Beverly, maybe this is a question to Brian and the staff. So the judicial center renovation, does that also assume that we press forward with the relocation of public work staff to the other facility?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay, and can you remind me of the cost that we were looking at for that?
So that is roughly 14 and a half, almost 15 million.
Okay, but now that would come from the enterprise fund.
That's correct.
It would not be tax dollar-based.
That is correct, that's enterprise dollars.
Okay, thank you.
So moving forward, so debt model number eight that you have in your packet, this is jail scenario we're calling number four. I didn't want to print out all four scenarios because all models are built the exact same, but I'm going to show you the summary for all four scenarios. So this scenario shows the jail debt issuance for a 600-bed jail, 800-bed core. So this is the most expensive model that we'll show you. And so this one is based on the legislative requirement of 5.344% interest rate. So as you can see, current county existing debt, proposed debt dropped in. This model is indicating at the maximum worst-case scenario, a 3.52 cent increase would be needed on the property tax rate in fiscal year '26 to be able to afford this. With the county model, same scenario, issued in '25, impact in '26, 3.38 cent tax rate impact. So at your last meeting, you'll recall, there was three different cost estimates provided from facilities, and then the sheriff had provided you already the full cost for the 600-bed, 800-bed core. So I know there's a lot on this screen, but we're going to try to walk through each one of them. So at the top, I've listed the judicial center, expansion and renovations, just there's no property tax rate increase to that. For the legislative requirements, for a 400-bed, 600-bed core, the financing amount would need to be 104, 105 million. So the estimated cumulative cost for interest and principal over the life of that bond is around 184 million. With the estimated property tax rate increase of 2.47 cents, the increase in liability to the homeowner would be $24.70. The same scenario, 400-bed, 600-bed core with a county debt model, is a 2.38 cent increase or $23.80 based on every $100,000 worth of value. Scenario number two, 500-bed capacity, 600-bed core, financing amount needed 118 million, cumulative cost around 205 million. That would be a 2.80 cent tax rate increase or $28 to the homeowner. For the county debt model, for the same, 2.69 cent increase or $26.90 to the homeowner. Scenario number three is a 600-bed jail with a 600-bed core. Financing request needed would be 131 million with the estimated cumulative cost of around 225 million. It would be a 3.13 cent tax rate increase. Same scenario, based on the county debt model, is a 3.01 cent tax rate increase. And then, the very last scenario, which you were just showing in the debt model printed out for you, is the full build-out of 600-bed capacity, 800-bed core. The financing amount would need to be 147 million. Total cumulative cost over the life of the bond is $250 million. The estimated property tax rate increase of 3.52 cents or $35.20 increase annually. The same model, using the county debt model, indicates a 3.38 cent property tax rate increase needed or $33.80. So I'm going to stop here and let you ask any questions you have. I know this is a lot for all the different scenarios. Ask if you have any questions about these models.
Not really a question, more of a statement. I think that we need to be clear to everybody that may be watching this from home. As you look at these numbers, you know, this is capital cost. This is the cost to build a jail facility under these parameters, meaning 400-bed, 600-bed core, and all the way up to 600-bed to 800-bed. I just want to, I want to be, you know, open and up front with everyone that these are capital capital figures. This does not include any kind of additional operating cost or, you know, things of that nature that may be on top of what we're looking at here.
That is correct. And the financing amount does not include what we currently already have appropriated for the jail for the land purchase and some additional dollars for design. This is actually what we would need to finance. So this next slide again is just an illustration of what the impact would be based on the county's debt model, average $350,000. And value for a 3.38 cent increase would increase the annual tax bill by $118.30. And this is based on, again, the full build-out, 600-bed, 800-bed core. And I failed to mention, we also have our financial advisor here with us, Mitch Brugeloh. So if you had any questions, I was going to put him on the spot also. But that concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have before we seek direction on how to
Any questions for Ms. Law?
Mr. Chair, Beverly, maybe you don't have these numbers, but you know, as we're looking over the examples of Union County debt annual tax increase or rate increase, and I mean, there's numerous ones that we explored that you showed us tonight. Does anyone perhaps know what the average home value in North Carolina and where that would fall so that we can get kind of an idea? I'm sorry, not North Carolina, but in Union County. I apologize.
I would dare to say to estimate around 350, $400,000 range in today's market.
Okay.
Yeah. And part of the challenge with that is we're, we'll be doing a revaluation soon and that number will change, but I think that's, that's about accurate, 350, between 350 and 400,000.
Okay. Thank you.
So if you don't have any further questions, this is where we would request that the board give us feedback and direction for each one of the bond referendum requests or bond request and how we move forward. As you saw previously in the schedule of events that need to take place, we are at the time of essence where we need direction to start preparing the actual legal documents that require your action in the May timeframe. So from the beginning, the first on the list to give direction on is the Union County Public Schools Bond Referendum Request. And I can go back to each summary if you need me to as you're giving feedback on each
first scenarios that we were looking at? So clarification from staff.
For the, which one?
So would, would each one of these require a vote then?
The school, the jail, the South Piedmont?
I believe it was the school. So if we go back to scenario one, or I'm sorry, debt model one. Is that what, is that what we're looking for?
At least some, the board to take action on, do you wish to proceed with a bond referendum
So this is a summary of both of those. Do you want me to go back to the actual debt model itself or is this summary?
for those items in the amount that you would like?
Yeah.
And then we'll actually have to go through the process of having our bond council and
So I just want to, I want to make sure that, that I understand.
I'll draft all of the necessary resolutions to bring back to you for you to vote on.
The, what I'm looking at is the big one here. So it's the existing debt service that we have with UCPS.
But this is actually telling us yes or no and what the amount is that you would like
So currently what we have with just the existing debt only, and that's no new projects, no
for that bond to actually be for.
So this wouldn't be final approval from the board, per se?
Technically, no. But I do want to, want to make very clear that if you give us a number and when we
nothing.
That's correct.
We are looking at a penny increase, no later than FY '26, right?
bring you that back in a resolution, if you say no to that resolution, the clock starts
That's correct.
And that's just to cover the existing debt?
That is correct, yes.
all over again and we may or may not be able to meet the deadline to actually make it
Yeah.
and put it in place.
This spreadsheet is, I've nicknamed it trouble because before we're considering any other new GO issuance and we're just talking about existing debt obligations, we start running into deficit in the next fiscal year, right? And part of the reason we're able to make our debt payments right now is because with the 20, with the most recent debt issuance for the schools, we had a bond premium, right? And that bond premium gets spent up, what, early into, into the next fiscal year?
Yes. In 2025, it will be completely spent down.
Okay. So, I mean, you know, I think everyone will agree, this is a, this is a tough situation. These are hard conversations. And when we start with the existing debt picture and the conversation's already hard, it's not going to get any easier when we start talking about issuance of new debt. So, I mean, this is my inclination as a, just a single commissioner, you know, is to take a step back and look at the big picture. You know, and the big picture is that even with just our existing debt, we start running into deficit without a, an ad valorem tax increase. The price of debt, meaning interest rates, is going up. You know, we all know that. The, you know, the days, the days two or three years ago when you could get a very nice interest rate for GO debt or revenue bond or your house mortgage, those days are over. And whenever the price of capital, i.e. interest rates, whenever that starts going up, you know, consumers of debt have to be more wary and more careful before agreeing to issue new debt. So I think for me, just as a single commissioner looking at all this, it's a pretty high bar for issuing new debt. So for me personally, I think I'm going to have to be a hard no on almost everything, almost all the new debt obligations, except for a jail. And the reason we need a new jail is because if we don't start, if we don't start getting busy designing and building one, we'll have a judge, a judge will order us to build one, like happened, like happened in the, back in the 1990s. So in terms of referendum at the ballot, I mean, I've got to be a hard no on the UCPS. I've got to be a hard no sadly on the SPPCC bond request. And we've got, you know, we should remember that we've got a SPPCC referendum that passed in 2022 that, you know, we haven't raised tax rates for. And, you know, they're not going to finish the design process for that, we're told, until spring of 2025. So we're in the, you know, thank goodness, we're in a position where we don't have to do anything right now. But, you know, they're designing that. SPPCC is designing that entrepreneurship center and is expecting that we'll be going to market next year to issue this debt. Well, we better have the funds to service it. The voters have already approved this. So, I mean, this is not a comment on the worthiness of, you know, Parkwood or East Union or, you know, SPPCC's request, the Public Safety Center. You know, there are, there are elements to all these projects that are worthy. That's not the place I'm coming from here. The place that I'm coming from is, is this one commissioner, is that we are in a market where the price of capital is high. It's higher than it's been in a while, and that means the debt service obligations are going to be heavier. And we haven't raised taxes to even meet the debt service obligations for our existing portfolio of debt. So that should give us great pause. And unless everybody up here has an appetite for significant property tax increases, you know, and I don't think any of us, you know, have an appetite for significant property tax increases, you know, we're going to have to be kind of wary about the debt we're willing to, you know, to put on a referendum and perhaps if voters approve it, you know, have to start servicing. So that's, that's just the perspective of this commissioner.
So, I mean, this is not a comment on the worthiness of, you know, Parkwood or East Union or, you know, S P C C's request, the Public Safety Center, you know, there are elements to all these projects that are worthy. That's not the place I'm coming from here. The place that I'm coming from is this one commissioner, is that we are in a market where the price of capital is high. It's higher than it's been in a while, and that means the debt service obligations are going to be heavier. And we haven't raised taxes to even meet the debt service obligations for our existing portfolio of debt. So, that should give us great pause. And unless everybody up here has an appetite for significant property tax increases, you know, and I don't think any of us, you know, have an appetite for significant property tax increases, you know, we're going to have to be kind of wary about the debt we're willing to, you know, to put on a referendum and perhaps if voters approve it, you know, have to start servicing. So, that's just the perspective of this commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. I appreciate Commissioner Williams' remarks, and I think that Commissioner Williams is correct that there's no one of us up here that has an appetite for a significant tax increase. You know, that being said, as we're looking at these items, I think that we all have to understand that, just like with anything else, we have to identify biggest needs versus wants. I would say that a lot of these, you know, could be needs. I look at the U C P S bond request, and I look at the middle school project. I think that that is something that we definitely need to kind of finish out that cluster. That's something that has been put in motion already. I would be amenable to seeing something on bond referendum for that project. I agree with Commissioner Williams that at this time, I don't think that the S P C bond referendum request is appropriate to put out for referendum. Given the jail, since that was brought up, I would certainly invite comments from my colleagues. You know, we have spent significant time discussing the jail needs, discussing the jail's scope. It has been heavily debated. We've seen numerous presentations from our sheriff's office, their staff. And what I would question is, is, you know, if we decided as a board tonight to go forward with the jail project, to put that out for bond referendum, what's the scope of the project? You know, what is it that we settle in on? Do we look at, you know, the recommended, I believe, Beverly, can you go back to that maybe? Do you have that where you can go back? There we go. So, do we look at the recommended 600-bed, 800-bed core? You know, or do we look at scaling this back and being responsible to the taxpayers of the county? So, I want to point out some similarities that, well, I should say some unsimilarities, if that's even a word, that we have to Mecklenburg County. And, you know, Mecklenburg, as I understand it, has somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, 1.1 million people, residents. If you compare that to Union County, well, we have approximately 256-ish, something like that maybe. And so, we are essentially a quarter of the size of Mecklenburg. And if you look at their facility, they have a daily average intake of round about 1,500 inmates, with a maximum capacity of round about 1,900. So, we're four times smaller in population. We have a lower crime rate than Mecklenburg. And so, if you do the math and you start, you know, whittling this down, you're looking at, you know, a quarter of, or one-fourth of 1,900 is approximately 475, and you've got 1,500 daily average inmates, you know, you're looking at 375. So, I think that, and I'm not saying that I'm a fan of this jail project and the cost that comes with it, but what I will say is, is that before we entertain putting this to bond referendum, we have to decide as a board which one of these options we're going to go with. Because to this point, I don't know that there's been consensus from this board on one singular option. I mean, I can tell you that, you know, if I'm looking at this personally, from my point of view, I would favor the smaller one if we're going to make that decision. I think that if you did something like that, that you're looking at a savings of around about, what, $40 million, you know, over the projected 600-bed, 800-bed core? And you are topping out with 600-bed capability with the 400-bed and 600-bed core, because as I understand it, the bed core is the maximum capacity. But again, I want to make this clear. You know, at this point, I don't know how we can sit here and decide right now, tonight, to put this on bond referendum or not when we have not even got consensus on the scope of the project. And so, you know, for my opinion, for us to be able to consider that, we have to get consensus amongst ourselves as to which one we're going to pursue. Because ultimately, Beverly, as you know, and Brian, as you know, you guys have to have the numbers. You have to have the information on the scope of the project that we're wanting to finance. So, before we even tackle a yes, no for any of these items, we have to have consensus.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, one piece of information that I think it would be helpful for us to get before the next meeting is what kind of possible inmate, federal inmate revenues, you know, that, you know, might be forthcoming. Because you've got counties like, you know, small rural counties like, you know, Bladen County that get over $1 million a year in, you know, federal inmate revenues. And, you know, I'd be interested in perhaps a conservative number, a conservative calculation about, you know, what might Union County be able to get in terms of revenues that might partially offset some of the debt service? You know, is that something that, you know, we can perhaps get before the next meeting? Mr. County Manager?
We can certainly work on that, absolutely. And I know where Commissioner Helms was going with this, so I do want to let the board know that, you know, selfishly, we are seeking direction. The bare minimum for a vote from this board is your next meeting on May 6. We have to have a decision by May 6 in order to meet all the time lines. You don't have to make that decision tonight. It does help us with our timing, but obviously, if you want to put that off and you want to wait till the May 6, but that is the default deadline. We can certainly work on getting you some estimates of that information or additional information the board may have about jail or any of the other projects. I would ask that if the board is willing to make decisions on some, that would make it a little easier on us. We could actually, if you say, okay, we're willing to make decisions on U C P S, but we want to hold off on the jail, fine. That makes it a little easier because we're not having to rush to do all of it at one time. But I understand, this is a lot for you to think of. It's a lot of impact. But that would be my suggestion if you're willing to at least give us some input.
Well, y'all, staff definitely needs some clarity from us. And from this commissioner, I can tell you, you know, flat no on the U C P S request, flat no on the S P C C, yes on the two-thirds issuance for the judicial center renovations, and yes on a jail of some size that, you know, we can, you know, gain a consensus on.
And I want to say, and of course, I respect the vice chairman's opinion, and of course, Commissioner Williams' opinion. I just want to make sure we don't, you know, build this thing too small. We can look next door at the judicial center. Now, that building's not 20 years old yet. It opened in 2005, and it's been overcrowded or too small for probably five years, and we're moving people out of there, moving them over here. So, of course, it's going to cost us more money to do that. We don't like that, but, you know, sometimes we have to spend money to save money, if you know what I mean. If we're going to build it later, it's going to cost more. We all know that. I think we all agree with that. But it's tough when you start, when you hear these numbers. It just makes it difficult for all of us. And I know, like Commissioner Helms said, I mean, it'd be great if we didn't have to build a jail, but I think it's, I think we don't have any choice at this point. I don't think we want the court to start ordering us to build more buildings. We hadn't had a whole lot of success when that's happened.
Mr. Chairman. I would be inclined, again, not to support the S P C, S P C C bond referendum at this time. You know, regarding the judicial or government center renovations, I have a question regarding that. So, the two-thirds general obligation bond issuance, what else can that be used on? So, if we decided as a board, just per se, that we wanted to find an alternate way to, you know, deal with the government center renovations or even postpone that, what, I mean, is there, I'm sure that there's things that that can be spent on and, okay, so can you explain that?
You can spend two-thirds bonds on anything that you could normally issue debt on, with a few exceptions of arenas, entertainment facilities. There is a list of restrictions from state statute that you cannot spend it on. But for us, if it's a regular capital project within general government function, it more than likely is going to meet the definition of being able to issue two-thirds bonds for it. So, like sporting complexes, you're not going to build like a coliseum with it. Those are limitations that are in the state statutes. Do you know anything else that, right off the top of your head?
Yeah, that's the big one. I think downtown development is another one. I'm trying to pull it up.
So, essentially, we're not moving the Panthers into Union County?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay. All right.
Just the Cubs. We'll move the Cubs.
Okay. And I think that, and listen, I don't want to, I don't want to keep going back to this, but I will briefly. You know, we look at these different requests that we're seeing, you know, from U C P S, from, well, all of these. And what we're dealing with is one common thread. The common thread that we're dealing with here is growth. And so, you know, with this additional growth, we're seeing now the price of that. We're seeing the price of, well, 20 years of, you know, unbalanced growth in this county. And so, we're having to build new schools. We're having to, you know, accommodate for government center renovations. We're having to look at a jail facility that, in all honesty, this county should not have to be looking at currently. But that, this is where we are. And I want to be clear that no matter what it is that we decide to do, ultimately, the voter has the authority. So, this would go to the voter.
Beverly, I know it may not be wise to depend on the federal inmates to supplement paying for the jail, but I would be, I understand, I spent some time at the jail this morning, that there's a real need for a place to house the federal inmates. In a report, I would really like to understand how much that would offset the debt load, how much it would go towards servicing the note, if that be possible.
We can work on that for the next meeting. I mean, unless anybody from the jail has those figures already?
Mr. Chairman?
No.
So, one thing, if I can just piggyback on that comment there, you know, I don't think that we need to look at the overall income. I think that we need to look at the profitability, okay? And I want to be clear about that because, you know, to say that we're getting X amount of dollars, you know, for a federal inmate, well, we also have to calculate, you know, the cost of food and, you know, other provisions that would come along with that inmate. So...
So, I think for a scenario, if we were to say, if we receive federal inmate money, that that would be revenue that we would directly put into the county's debt fund to offset the debt service cost of the jail. That would be a new revenue source going into that debt fund specifically to offset debt service costs. You're still going to have operating cost, but it would 100% be used, unless there's any restrictions from the federal government that I'm not aware of. It could 100% be used to offset debt service costs.
Mr. Chairman. And have we looked at any kind of modeling for how this would affect us? Like, for example, let's say that, you know, we went, we pressed forward with the jail project, and let's say that it was approved in bond referendum. Have we gotten any kind of modeling that suggests, okay, this is the financial impact with the operating cost? I mean, anything at all. So, I mean, do we have anything as far as, and I believe I asked this question last time, you know, we're going to have to, we're going to have to hire more COs. I know that the, a number would be, would be graduated perhaps, you know, as we started taking on additional inmates. But we need to understand, I believe, you know, what is the long-term operating expense of this? Because it's not just capital, all right? What we're talking about here is just to build the building, all right? We're not talking about how this may impact Union County five years down the road after it's been built. So, I think that we all need to understand that when you start looking at building a new jail facility, or a new judicial center, or, you know, other things, that it's more to it than the brick and mortar. So, this is what the taxpayer initially has to pay for, but this is not where the road ends.
I think I've been pretty spot on as far as my comments from previous meetings and our retreat. I know we need a new jail. We've all, we've all seen the current condition, some plant line, the structural damage. But I keep going back to capacity. The schools have to address capacity, and I keep trying to use that same logic with the jails. If the average daily incarceration was 240, was rounding up to 250. And I think your weekenders, they have been around 20, and you were sending 10 to the Bears County. Again, I think you can't really do anything until this body decides, or which plan are we going to do? Facilities came to us with a 400-bed, 600-core, and a couple, the 600-bed, 600-core. Tonight, we're throwing in the judicial center for the first time. So, it seems unreasonable to me to see how this is going to impact, you know, the average homeowner. You take these, you know, $26 increases for this project, or $17 increases for that project. I personally cannot support a tax increase on Union County citizens to go into a for-profit business to bring in federal inmates from other states and counties so that our people can have a tax increase to build a bigger jail. We were presented with a 400-bed capacity. That is, you know, much more, I think we would have spare beds today with our weekenders and the 10 veteran at the Bears County. You know, we've been told the average daily incarceration in Union County, 240. I think I rounded it up to, you know, 300, you know, 400 last time, but to go to an 800-bed core with this type of increase, and this is our first time seeing, you know, what Union County taxpayers, you know, you know, the average home in Union County for all, for all accounts is probably $100, $100 a year to do what's being asked for. And I know that I wasn't put here to do a tax increase or to create a for-profit business to bring in federal inmates into Union County. If somebody has spare beds somewhere else, you know, maybe go somewhere else. But until I get more information, I just cannot support this type of tax increase that's like triple what our daily average is right now. So, as far as S P C C, I'll just go with Commissioner Williams and say, that's a hard no, unfortunately, right now. I know they do amazing work out there, but yeah, I believe that is for the Union County Sheriff's Department as well. We haven't even taken care of the last bond that they asked for. So, I'm not ready to move forward with another bond. We haven't even taken care of S P C's last bond that passed. As far as Union County public schools, I think it would be wise. We've already started the ball rolling on a New Forest Hills High School. It's the only community that does not have a campus where their middle school and high school students can be on the same campus. Now, Monroe is a little different, but the whole goal between moving East Union Middle over to the existing Forest Hills was, would be so that those students would be able to participate in the same clubs and sports and everything as most of the other students in our county, where the middle school and high school have, you know, at practice fields, athletic fields, stages for theater, or anything else. So, I personally, I would be willing to support, you know, putting the East Union Middle Phase 2 out to the voters, simply because we've been talking about it for four or five years, and we've already moved forward with East Elementary and Forest Hills High School. And I would recommend putting Phase 2 out to the voters and let them decide. I'm not sure that I'm ready to move forward with the Parkwood High School three, design phase. I think this is a really, really bad market right now, and maybe we need to complete what we've already started. Meaning, you know, let's, let's look at East Union Middle School Phase 2 before we start another big project. And, you know, almost $11 million in just, you know, design phase may not, may not be money well spent right now. We could put it towards East Union Middle or Forest Hills, completing that campus.
So, can I just kind of intervene here? So, I've heard from three of you already no on South Piedmont. Would you all like to give a consensus together on South Piedmont so we can?
Yeah. So, you need a motion and a vote then?
Be helpful. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair? I'll make the motion that, that we deny the S P C C bond referendum request at this time.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion indicate by.
Aye.
All right. So, I think there seems to be at least a majority who would like to revisit the jail at the, at least the May 6 meeting. And whether or not you say yes or no in amount, that is the day we'll need to make a decision. I've heard an alternative to Union County Public Schools is that the desire of this board to discuss this on your own and bring that back for May 6 as well. Would you prefer to just, you know, have that be on the May 6 meeting as well?
Correct. And we're going to have to come to some consensus whether we're going to do the jail slash legislative bond, or we're going to do that package altogether with the judicial center, or are we just going to focus on the jail?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And then we need to look at these, you know, eight options, and we've got to choose one.
So, understand, there's really four options that we have to show. Two different models for each option, so it's not really eight. It's, do you want a 400-bed jail with a 600-bed core? We have to show the legislative requirement. It's just two different interest rates that we are showing.
Yeah.
Fair enough, yeah.
All right. So, what I hear is we'll bring back May 6, U C P S, we'll bring back jail, and obviously, we'll discuss the judicial center slash government center on May 6 as well.
Agreed.
Ms. Chairman, can I make a suggestion?
If your suggestion is to take a break, that's what we're going to do.
I was going to make one more suggestion.
Go ahead, sir.
Do you mind if we consider moving the Waxaw Parkway item up, and I'll do the CIP after that, do it last?
Yes, sir. Can we do that after the break?
Yes.
All right. Let's take a 10-minute break. Thank you. All right. Let's take a ten-minute break. Thank you.
Appreciate your, uh, lot of inquiry on that. I think we're kind of on the same page with, uh, with what we're going to make there. It's just, yeah.[432.41]
Session, we're gonna, at the county manager's request, we're gonna skip over the Union County Water CIP follow-up and go to item number 24064 Waxaw Parkway Comprehensive Transportation Plan Amendment Update. I will recognize Bjorn Hansen for this item.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Manager Matthews. I bring another weighty topic for you to consider this evening. This is a CTP amendment called the Comprehensive Transportation Plan for the Waxaw Parkway, something that was presented to you last fall. And this is something that's required by general statute. It affects all of North Carolina. Everywhere in North Carolina is covered by some version of a comprehensive transportation plan. This portion of Union County is maintained by the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization. And updates go through CARTPO. So, the municipalities in Union County do not make the decisions, they make the recommendations and the proposals, and the full board of CARTPO makes the local decision, and then the Board of Transportation Raleigh makes the state's decision, and together, that comprises the approval process. This plan is used literally daily by Union County and the municipalities. We use it in site plan reviews, we use it in prioritizing new projects and identifying new projects to be considered by the NC DOT. It makes recommendations for widenings, new roads, for rail, pedestrian, bicycle, and transit. It doesn't make intersection scale improvements, which is why we have the Critical Intersection Program. And again, we use it, the rezoning that you heard tonight along NC 84, the widening additional right-of-way that was requested as a part of that site plan, was reflected in the CTP. And so, if approved, that would have resulted in additional land for future widening, once that is funded, as well as scoping input for when there's bridge replacements and other types of projects. So, this, this plan is very important on a day-to-day basis. The amendment that is being considered by the three municipalities and ultimately by CARTPO would take the orange route, which is what's currently on, on the plan, and move it to the purple route, and include this hook, which would allow NC 75, or I'm sorry, the Waxaw Parkway to cross over 75 with a bridge and then connect back in. This was based on a 2022 feasibility study that was conducted by the NC DOT. And you can see that you have Mineral Springs here. This is an obsolete map. You'll see that I made this approximately one year ago. Since that time, much of this area has been annexed into Mineral Springs at the request of the property owners. The area in gold-yellow is Waxaw. So, the amount that's Union County is relatively limited, but we do play a role. Again, this new alignment, what we were given was the corridor in gray. The DOT recognizes that it's not ultimately the precise alignment. If this project were funded, it would consider multiple alignments and, and come up with one for construction. So, just because the CTP looks very precise, it's not. It is an alignment, it's based on best information at the planning level that's available at the time. And it includes a cost estimate of approximately $72 million. And again, there'll be another design if this were actually funded, and the line could wiggle away from what's actually shown on the map here. Now, the Waxaw Parkway doesn't end at NC 75, it goes south to Providence Road, south of Waxaw. And the orange line keeps that contiguous corridors to the south. And so, to keep that continuity, we recommended a amendment to include this lime-green segment to keep that section where it connects with NC 75. And the only reason this was done was because of the feasibility study to the north. To put things in perspective, it's, it's been a mess. This is 30 years' worth of planning and various versions of the thoroughfare plan, which is what existed before the CTP, and is, has been updated several times. And we have reflected various versions of this alignment in Platts that are on people's surveys. This includes the Snow White Field area. There's a, a version from over 20 years ago that includes a reservation in this area for the alignment at that time. I will say that we used to require the land to be set aside in Platts. And when someone would come along with a buy-right development, we would require them to set aside the land. But the state lost a billion-dollar lawsuit in the past six, seven years due to this being considered a taking. Property rights were correctly interpreted as saying that they should have been compensated. So, unless it's a rezoning where it truly is a negotiation, we don't require or, or request the dedication of that right-of-way when it's a buy-right development. So, in 2023, we received the new alignment, and we said, "Well, we need to update the map, because we don't want there to be two alignments out there, this study as well as what's on the CTP." So, we collectively, Mineral Springs, Waxaw, and Union County initiated the process to amend the CTP. We each endorsed resolutions asking to start the process. We didn't, this didn't say whether one alignment was better than the other, it just said, "We want to start the process." So, we went out to a public comment period with one month of public comment, the summer of 2023, included online and in-person events, we included mailings to all the properties within 300 feet of the corridors. And then in September, we took the results back to the governing boards, whether that was Waxaw, Mineral Springs, Union County. You can see what happened. Waxaw voted for the amendment, Mineral Springs voted against the project, not the amendment, but the project. They had legitimate questions about the impacts of, of a bypass. And so, they said, "Instead of just one alignment versus the other, we think you should reconsider this, this segment and, and look at other types of improvements to the existing roadway network that could manage growth." And at the time, in the fall of 2023, Board of Commissioners did not take a position, you were waiting on the Waxaw municipal election results. And so, this is the first time we've heard this since that meeting last fall. So, as a reminder, in terms of public outreach, we did a pretty good job with public outreach. We had over 400 responses, 50-plus people attended in person in August. There was really two populations of feedback, those who lived within the corridor and those who didn't. And they responded differently. So, there's a lot of, lot of details in terms of whether it's an improvement or not. This is the overall average. You had the reds being strongly against, and the blues being strongly for. You see that it's roughly split, slightly to the positive in terms of whether the new route is improvement. When you ask the question of whether it should be built, it is similar in terms of more people want it built than don't, but it's not overwhelming. But then you look at whether, you know, the population who is affected, over three-quarters were not directly affected, and, and less than a quarter were either both alignments or one of the alignments. Now, if you look by comparing people who were in the corridor, and this is self-reported, so we didn't verify this information, but self-reported, they didn't like the new route, and they don't want it built. And I think that's pretty, I think that's pretty reasonable. If you gave the option of not wanting a road through your property, you would say, "No, I don't." But if you weren't, it, it was roughly the opposite, which again, is 302 compared to 93 people. These people thought the new route was better and wanted it built. In terms of demographics, people who were affected by the alignment, it was overwhelmingly Waxaw, very few people were in Mineral Springs who responded, unincorporated were the remainder. And you see approximately, you know, one or two people for Weddington, Wesley Chapel, Monroe, Marshville, don't live in the county. So, those, those could be potentially, they own property in the corridor, but they live somewhere else. It's tough to say that these are errors in terms of responding. People who don't live, or I'm sorry, who are not affected by the alignment, so they don't live in the corridor, overwhelmingly Waxaw, and then unincorporated Union County. Mineral Springs had a relatively low number of responses. In terms of the age breakdown, they were similar between the two. So, the concerns we heard, environmental impacts of building the Parkway, it's obviously undeveloped right now, the right-of-way acquisition process, how will people be compensated, fear of additional development in the area, that it's not useful, and why not consider alternate routes. So, we just wanted to provide some staff responses to answer these commonly asked questions. In terms of the environmental impacts, the bottom line is, it will go through a very rigorous NEPA and SEPA, which is National and State Environmental Protection, I forget, oh, Policy Act, there we go, I want to remember the acronym correctly. So, it'll be evaluated, and there'll be a thorough inventory of all of the impacts between different routes. And then the decision-makers will have to choose a, a route based on that accounting of all the impacts. In terms of the right-of-way acquisition, this will almost certainly be a federally funded project, so it will go through the Uniform Act, which is a very prescriptive, federally dictated acquisition process that involves appraisals, negotiation, condemnation if necessary, appropriate amount of notification of people. It's not like they just knock and say, "You've got to get out tomorrow." And, and so, that process would be followed if this project were built. Spurring additional development in the area, we don't have the answer of how much development will occur, because like, we don't have a model output that shows the growth allocation with and without the model. The area circled in red is where the, the Parkway is located. This is the current model with growth allocations. Through 2050, you can see it's fairly light in this area, but north and south of the, of the Parkway i- is fairly strong in terms of development. So, it is reasonable to assume that there'll be additional growth in the area, but i- it, as always, with the rezonings you saw tonight, between Mineral Springs, Union County, Waxaw, you have the choices of how to approve development when rezonings are requested. In terms of not a useful project, and Waxaw performed what's called an origin destination study in the last few years to figure out where people were coming and going to get through downtown Waxaw, because that's really the motivation for this project. And the bottom line is that two-thirds of the traffic wants to get through Waxaw, and the Parkway would divert a, a good percentage of this traffic. And in terms of the Parkway itself, the projection 20 years from now is that it would carry 8,000 to 10,000 cars a day. To consider alternate alignments, I think all we have to do is look at this map and say, "We've looked at alternate alignments." And multiple alignments have been considered over the last 30 years. The thinking is that by moving it closer to Waxaw itself, it will be, make it more useful in terms of diverting traffic away from downtown Waxaw. Ultimately, the vision is that it be NC 16, so this section of NC 16 from the existing Parkway down to 75 would get re-designated to whatever was built on the east side of town. So, to summarize Mineral Springs and Waxaw's positions, and we're all, we're all partners here, they took action last September, and they recently reaffirmed that position on April 11th. They're neutral on the alignments, but they have concern over development facilitated by Parkway. They request eliminating as a part of the CTP and replace with alternate improvements to road network. Waxaw took action on September 11th. They recently reaffirmed that they support the new alignment. That was sent to us in the last few weeks, which is why we're presenting to you. So, the options that are available are to amend the CTP and have a new alignment, or to request removing it from the CTP. It's not normal to have a split position. As of right now, it's effectively a split position regardless of whichever way Union County goes. So, CARTPO has offered to mediate a discussion amongst all the stakeholders to try and see if there's a, a position that everyone can agree to. Our footprint is limited. It may, through future annexation, become zero at that point. It would truly be just Mineral Springs and Waxaw, but that's not the case right now. And again, this would go ultimately to CARTPO's board. So, the requested actions, and you don't need to do them right now, because Mineral Springs and Waxaw are here to present their information as well, but ultimately, we're asking that you consider taking a position on the Waxaw Parkway and the proposed alignment, as well as consider appointing a board member as the representative to a CARTPO facilitated meeting with Mineral Springs, NC DOT, and Waxaw. So, before we invite, I'll just go in alphabetical order, I'll go with Mineral Springs first. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So, there've been, what, five, six different alignments of the history of this?
One, two, three, at least five.
And Mr. Hansen, this started in 1992, is that right?
That was the first, that was the first plan that we found with, with an adopted alignment. And these CTPs take several years, so realistically, you're talking 1990, potentially for the discussion of it. I introduce one of the council members from Mineral Springs. Mayor Rick Becker is the CARTPO representative for Mineral Springs, but he wasn't able to attend this evening. And I can bring up the resolution if you want.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. Excuse me. The first thing I wanted to address was the proposed growth affected by the new alignment, or which was the original alignment. We studied the various possible Waxaw Parkway CTP alignments. It became clear that the Waxaw Parkway will serve as facilitator and catalyst for massive and unsustainable development, excuse me, along the south side of NC Highway 75. The proposed new alignment feeds directly into a 229-acre tract south of NC Highway 75 that was recently annexed into Waxaw and rezoned from low-density Union County, RA 40 and R20, to ultra-high-density Waxaw zoning. With its new zoning, this property has the potential for 1,000 to 1,200 more homes and townhouses. The rezoning was approved as of January 23rd, 2023, which was after the new Waxaw alignment was proposed. In addition, there's another larger tract, 1,259 acres, south of Highway 75, just east of the 229-acre tract and contiguous to it. There is currently a proposal not yet approved for massive high-density subdivision on that property that could contain well over 5,000 houses. The property has been on the radar for many years, and the current proposed Waxaw Parkway alignment feeds directly into it. So, with that being said, I just wanted to bring up a few issues that we have discussed at our council meeting. The northeastern leg, the orig- the more recent, not the current, cuts directly through and negatively impacts the Waxaw Meadows Plantation Subdivision, unique Mineral Springs conservation neighborhood of approximately 20 families on lots averaging 10 acres. This has changed locations within the neighborhood several times, seesawing residents and making it impossible to know where they could build. 2002 original plat, the Parkway route, shown near the west side of the neighborhood. From 2002 to 2016, homes built on the east side to avoid the future Parkway. 2016 to 2018, Waxaw successfully requested that CRTPO change the CTP location 2,000 feet east within the neighborhood, impacting numerous existing homes and farms. In 2018, Mineral Springs and residents of that area asked the proposed alignment remain on the west side, but those requests were denied. From 2020 to 2023, property owners began building homes on the west side of the neighborhood, because future Parkway alignment was to remain on the east side. And then in 2023, 2024, newly requested change in CTP alignment moves the route to the west side again, and would impact those newly-built homes. As was stated earlier, of the 20 properties in there, all but two have been developed. So, we would be displacing families. In addition, there is a new railroad overpass and northwestern leg of the Waxaw current Parkway currently beginning construction, 1.2 miles west of the main intersection in downtown Waxaw. Already filling a major part of the bypass need from 16 to the Waxaw post office to Highway 75, and it could be complete in just a few years. This leg is also one mile south of the Waxaw Fire Department, addressing the concerns of the Fire Department. In current, CTP envisions the Waxaw Parkway as a loop or an outer belt. Such designs invariably serve as a catalyst for more high-density development and ultimately create more congestion. An outer belt is overkill for a small suburban town. Existing roads heading east from NC 16, north of Waxaw, already handle the bulk of the eastbound traffic heading south on 16. Subject Parkway alignment simply creates a more direct route to encourage more development south of 75. Thank you for your time.
Next will be James Kelly, the Traffic Engineer for the town of Waxaw.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is James Kelly. I am the Traffic and Transportation Engineer with the Town of Waxaw. Joining me tonight is also Matt Hubert, the Assistant Town Manager and Engineering Director. Just to start off, talking about the Waxaw Parkway CTP amendment, to talk about our intent this evening. Our intent is that Waxaw wants to work with Union County and Mineral Springs to promote a solution that benefits the region equitably. We know that the 16 widening project is coming, is programmed as part of the STIP fiscal year 2029. Ultimately, that project, it's a DOT project that will terminate at Waxaw Parkway, and from there, traffic will be bottlenecked down to two lanes through Waxaw. Consider that there's been multiple alternatives, like Bjorn has talked about, for well over 30 years. That first alternative looked at, recorded in 1992. Ultimately, the issue cannot be resolved at grade. What do I mean? And this is consistent with moving towards future railroad projects, is that railroad, the railroad wants to eliminate these at-grade rail crossings because they're, they're dangerous. In fact, we've had four recorded incidences in the past few months of these larger vehicles getting stuck on the tracks, even after reprofiling done by CSX. And that is a, that's a safety issue. So, one day, it could occur where a, or a heavy vehicle gets stuck on the tracks, and it could potentially be where that vehicle is not removed in time. Essentially, what would happen from there is, well, you know, the train would win every time. We also must be aware of all levels of analysis that have already occurred, provided, ultimately, we worked with multiple entities. This, this includes Kimmelyhorn, RS&amp;H, NC DOT, Union County through their Critical Intersection Program, as well as Waxaw. Ultimately, all of these provided a non-viable solution to the congestion that we currently have at the intersection of 16 and 75. All prior analysis continues to support the Waxaw Parkway as the primary solution to addressing congestion and safety in our downtown area. The, again, the intent, and the intent tonight is let's work together to move toward a CRTPO facilitated meeting, so that way we can discuss this more in detail. Another initial question that we have for, for you all is, you must remember where we are in the process. So, we're still on the CTP. CTP stands for Comprehensive Transportation Plan. This is a 30-plus-year plan. We started in 1992, it's been well over 30 years. Assuming that this would move forward, you're still looking at, if you move toward a federal-funded program, you still have to go through the MTP, which is the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. And that, that's a prioritization that takes place over 20 years. And then on top of that, you would also have to move towards the TIP, the Transportation Investment Program. That's another 10 years. So, if we started today, and this program were to be federally funded, you're still looking at another 30-year timeline before this thing is even built. So, just want to emphasize that. And the, the initial question that we have is ultimately, is this proposed route better than the existing route, or should we look at it again and tweak it? Okay, Waxaw's opinion is that this route, this proposed route is better than the existing route. And that's due to various studies from the NC DOT feasibility study, as well as the OD study, which basically shows that we must maximize our traffic pull away from the intersection of 16 and 75 while minimizing the impacts to developed areas. So, why is the Waxaw Parkway important? Ultimately, without the Parkway, there are impacts to the overall character and quality of downtown Waxaw. Our goal and primary objective is to preserve Waxaw's quaint historical nature and provide a downtown atmosphere that prioritizes the pedestrian over the vehicle. Ultimately, the Parkway is important because it will help reduce congestion, particularly in our historic district downtown. It'll help increase safety by providing an improved emergency response time. Tonight with you, I'll provide this to the county clerk, our letters of support from the fire chief, as well as the police chief, indicating that this route would provide them with an improved emergency response time. In addition, the Parkway will help to decrease a lot of those vehicular and pedestrian conflicts, as well as provide an alternative route to mitigate for the railroad and heavy truck conflicts. Furthermore, the Parkway would include an advancement of our bicycle and pedestrian accommodations. This is important, I'll get more into that here in a moment. And then, ultimately, the Parkway would also help to encourage commercial uses over residential uses. Again, look at the Union County 2050 Plan, which shows and identifies this corridor as an economic corridor. Look at the 2040 Waxaw Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Again, this corridor has been identified on long-range plans as economic centers and economic corridors. Ultimately, the Parkway would provide a solution to addressing your local and regional traffic demands, and this is why you should support the Waxaw Parkway. Looking at the existing lane configurations at the intersection of 16 and 75, again, this is in our core downtown area. From a local perspective, Waxaw wants to alleviate the congestion at this intersection. And we conducted an origin destination study that showed that two-thirds, or 67.5% of all of the traffic that comes through this area is non-local traffic. So, that involves non-local trips, commuter trips, regional trips. This is a regional issue, and this is majority regional traffic. This is not traffic that's majority to Waxaw. This is from the surrounding regions going into South Carolina, Monroe, and Charlotte as well. So, this is a regional issue. Therefore, from a regional perspective, we want to provide a north-south route around Waxaw to accommodate for these local and regional traffic demands. So, the ultimate cause of the, of the congestion issue, issues downtown is due to existing conditions. In particular, it's a capacity issue when you're looking at the southbound left turns in particular. So, right now, we only have one left turn. That figure to the right shows an alternative that we looked at, as far as providing that dual-left turn. Ultimately, these preferred lane configurations do not have adequate real estate. So, what do I mean by that? Ultimately, if you were to implement this, these are NC routes, and it is a state requirement to accommodate for what's known as the WB62FL turning movement, more commonly known, this is an interstate semi-trailer, and this must be accommodated on state routes. When looking at those turning movements in particular, you can see that we've analyzed that, and those turning movements go into the opposing lane of travel, which is not safe. In addition, those turning movements impact our pedestrian network downtown, and they do in some cases impact the historical buildings themselves. Therefore, the solution would be to move this potential dual-left turn location north to Waxaw Parkway and provide an alternative route around 16 and 75 to support these local, local and regional traffic demands. Furthermore, as far as increasing safety, the congestion at 16 and 75 leads to traffic buildup and queuing, which results in site distance issues at various cross streets along this corridor. By reducing this congestion, you will aid in increasing overall safety and will provide an improved emergency response time. Again, provided to you this evening will be letters of support from the fire chief, as well as the police chief indicating as such. Furthermore, we would promote safer railroad crossings with a bridge overpass. Again, we've had four recorded incidences in the past few months of these vehicles getting stuck on the tracks. And the Waxaw Parkway would provide an alternative route for these larger trucks with the future NC vision for an NC 16 route designation to travel and to avoid these railroad conflicts. Furthermore, the Waxaw Parkway would include a 10-foot multi-use path that could accommodate bicycle, pedestrian, and other multimodal considerations. Why is this important? Because ultimately, it leads to a pedestrian focus, focusing on that pedestrian, emphasizing the safety of the pedestrian over the vehicle. What does this lead to? Another letter that will be provided- Another letter that will be provided to you this evening comes from our Waxaw Downtown Business Association, supporting the project. Ultimately, the success of downtown Waxaw and the safety of its businesses rely on the Parkway, and prioritizing the walkability and pedestrian safety leads to increased investment downtown. So downtown is home to over 100-plus small businesses employing more than 750 people. This results in, this has resulted in over $121 million in total investment since 2009, and each year, we attract, Waxaw attracts over 1.5 million visitors, with a majority of our visitors coming from Western Union County. Ultimately, downtown Waxaw is an important historical and cultural resource for not only Western Union County, but for the county as a whole. It is ultimately a gathering place where people come from across the entire county. The largest complaints that we have from the business owners and shoppers is traffic causing this unsafe conditions for pedestrians. So if we are able to at least mitigate or eliminate some of that traffic, a good portion of that traffic from this intersection, that'll help us to promote a more pedestrian infrastructure network that's ultimately safer for the pedestrian. So we've already started some of these projects and have completed this, this project in particular. This is from our grand opening at the downtown transportation tap project, and as you can see, we started to focus that shift more so on the pedestrian atmosphere, and that brought a lot of more pedestrians to the area and more business along with it. Furthermore, this is another picture from Jamming by the Tracks. So this is another area where we've prioritized the pedestrian, and we have a lot of people that come out across from the entire community to come to these types of events. So ultimately, what I'm leading to is that removing the Parkway should not be an option for consideration. Consider the responsibility of the governing body and weigh impacts to downtown Waxaw and historical properties. Ultimately, consider that future regional growth will occur regardless of whether this roadway is built or not, and removing the Parkway would be detrimental to resolving the problem in a functional way. And really, further delay will just cause any corridor to become at risk for increased costs, as well as increased frustration to residents of Waxaw Meadows. Ultimately, the success that we are having downtown is something Waxaw wants to continue, and that has been based off a long-range plan for a Parkway. If the county and Mineral Springs say that there shouldn't be a Parkway based on growth that will occur anyways, then this will ultimately sunset the economic generation, historical nature, and cultural quaintness of downtown Waxaw. Furthermore, by removing the Parkway, this could ultimately compromise the health and safety of the public welfare. So ultimately, let's move to work together to come to a equitable solution that benefits not only Waxaw, but Union County and Mineral Springs as well. And how do we do that? We move toward a CRTPO facilitated discussion. Looking at the overall community engagement, I just want to note that, yes, there was mixed feedback, although when you look at the overall inputs, when asked these various questions as far as, is the proposed new route an improvement, and do you want the Waxaw Parkway to be built, you can see that there is majority support achieved from the community engagement period. So as far as the board considerations, focus on whether the proposed amendment is better than the existing alignment, and note that this alignment is at the CTP level and could always be modified again. There is, note that there is also majority community support for the new alignment and to build the Waxaw Parkway. So the fourth and final piece that'll be provided to the clerk this evening is a summary of those community engagement results written to CRTPO. So ultimately, let's move toward a CRTPO facilitation offer for mediation, and we would ask, Waxaw would ask you all to support the Parkway as it provides numerous benefits, such as reducing downtown congestion, particularly in our historic district, increasing safety by improving emergency response time, decreasing vehicular pedestrian conflicts, and providing an alternative route to mitigate for railroad and heavy truck conflicts, as well as advanced bicycle and pedestrian accommodation, encouraging commercial uses over residential uses as identified within planned corridors, and to provide a solution to ultimately address the local and regional traffic demands. Again, without the Parkway, there are impacts to the overall character and quality of downtown Waxaw, and just to reiterate, our goal and primary objective is to preserve Waxaw's quaint historical nature and ultimately provide a downtown atmosphere that prioritizes the pedestrian over the vehicle. So with that, I will toss it over to Matt.
Thank you, James. Thank you, board, for allowing us this time. Thank you, Bjorn, for your context as well. Again, a lot of context for something that's, that's been on the books for 30 years. And, and one thing that's, that's clear is there's been a lot of activity in, in, in bringing it forward, but not a lot of success, and, and it's clear in these last couple of months that what's been missing is the dialogue. There really hasn't been any significant dialogue between Waxaw, Mineral Springs, and the county on what is a very regional issue. Waxaw, you know, it's, it's on the map. Our downtown is right square in the, in the sights of, of what's currently going on, and so we've, you know, kind of taken the mantle to say, okay, we got to get this through the process, and we've been very focused on the CRTPO process. What we have not been focused on is, is, is what Mineral Springs is wanting to have us here, and likely what you want to have us here as well. And that's why this is, this is a valuable point to, to bring us all together and, and work toward, toward what we all want to see happen for the region. Again, the alignment was adopted before I got here, there was a public engagement meeting in 2018. NC DOT presented the feasibility study in the middle of all that Waxaw did not request anything in that, in those terms, it was brought to us, and it did, when we looked at the list of things, it showed lower impacts than the, the current alignment that's on the CTP. And so, we continued to move forward with that one, saying, hey, a good idea is a good idea, let's keep going. It's clear, right, that, that we have not spoken with enough of the stakeholders to, to plan, for anyone to feel comfortable moving forward, and that's why I think CRTPO made, made a great request, that they bring us all together, and we, and we, we talk about all our concerns and, and lend on a solution that, that satisfies those. One of the things we want to do is not drag this out too much, right? We've already seen what's occurred when we, when we didn't have enough action, right? The property owners in Waxaw Meadows are uncertain, and moving this forward, I want to provide that clarity, and we all want to know what to expect, when to expect it, and, and how. And again, staying in the CTP is the longest range. It's, it's a 30-year-plus program. We want to get it moved on to the MTP, so we've got it funded, and we've got a 20-year window, and then ultimately into 10 years, and then, and then completed. It's not unlike Monroe's bypass. Same concept, little smaller scale. Charlotte's economic growth and Union County's livability will continue the growth rates we've experienced. Those are, those are not going away anytime soon. And that's why it's important not to take a step back. For me, it's hard to understand how is unplanning for a solution, the solution to lack of fully planning for this in the past and really pulling trigger. We shouldn't be here talking about this, right? This should have already been done, there shouldn't have been any impacts because those properties were not built in 92 when this was proposed. But again, the, the rate the government moves and, and all the changes that happened between administrations all across the board, from then to now, have really put us here. Waxaw doesn't have the time to wait any longer when we consider this, and, and I really ask that you agree to collaborate on a solution that, that the current issues take into account, and also the future concerns, right? I think it's worthy of a, of a commissioner from your board to, to come join us, and let's talk further about all these details and bring back to the public and the CRTPO a plan that everybody really agrees with. Thank you. Any questions? Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I do have some questions, and I'll address this to all interested parties, so that would be Bjorn with our staff, the gentleman from Mineral Springs, and then also So if I understand correctly, this project has been alive in some way, shape, or form since 1992, I believe is what we've, what we've seen today? And it's almost like, it's like the project that just keeps on surviving, you know? We, we keep moving it around. The gentleman there from Waxaw just made a comment. He said, you know, that growth rates are not going to slow down, that growth rates are still going to be present. And he also said that had we done these things, or done this Parkway in 1992, that we wouldn't have had to contend with the properties that are currently built. So, you know, with that, as I look out here in the audience, it seems to me that we've had so many different iterations of this Parkway because, well, we've had growth get in the way of the projected plan, and then, well, we decided that, okay, well, we're not going to impact this resident or that resident, and now we're back down to impacting these folks over here, and I'm sure many others, to accommodate a two-lane road. And let, let's be clear, we discussed this on September 18th. I went back and I watched that meeting last night. And so Bjorn, I'm going to ask you if you can humor me for just a minute, I want to ask you a question. I want to ask the current amended path for this particular project. I asked the same question September 18th. Does it happen to empty out at a specific proposed project right there off of, well, it's in close proximity to Western Union Elementary School? And if I understand correctly, this proposed project could facilitate as many as 6,000 homes, and that project's called Polo Grounds. Are you familiar with that?
That project's inside the town of Waxaw, so I really can't answer any questions about it.
Okay, I understand. But in September 18th, what we discussed was is that the current alignment would straddle that property and that proposed development. And so if I understand correctly, if we were to say, if everybody was holding hands on this project today, that we're still 30 years out. Now, what I want to ask is, and maybe I should direct this to our staff, if we had a 5,000 to 6,000-home neighborhood, 6,000 homes, what would be the length of time for the build-out on that?
That'd probably take about 30 years.
Yeah, imagine that, about 30 years. So, so seeing as how the proposed alignment currently bisects one of the biggest neighborhoods that Waxaw has ever approved, and one that may take about 30 years to develop, coincidentally, the Parkway is going to take about 30 years to be built. It seems to me that what we're dealing with here, in addition to, you know, one of the reasons why we discussed the need for a new Parkwood High School, what I think that we're dealing with right now is a situation where we are developing a Parkway that may impact certain folks here to facilitate new growth, new growth in the way of Polo Grounds and other developments that Waxaw would like to get implemented. Now, it's not for me or this board to determine what Waxaw does, they have their own elected board, they can certainly do that. From my two cents on this project, however, I will not support it. I will not support displacing current residents, you know, for, or setting them aside for new growth and new residents to come into this county. I will not support the other potential growth, residential growth, that this Parkway will bring, because let's be real, we're not talking about the Monroe Bypass, we're not talking about a toll road. You know, is there a solution needed for this? Absolutely, probably. I mean, I don't disagree. But what I do disagree with is I don't believe that we can responsibly support this plan based off of what we have seen currently with the projected growth that apparently will not stop. I will not vote to facilitate new residential growth in this area, which by the way, is near an elementary school. Okay? I won't do that. So I stand opposed to this, and, you know, I would even go so far as to make the motion right now that Union County does take the, does take a position on it, and that final position would be that we do not support the current alignment, and, and I would, I would welcome my colleagues' comments.
I'm sorry, can, can I ask for some clarification, just so everyone understands? So, is that, that you would support, that it be removed completely from CTP? Or is that the alignment change, you would not support the alignment change? Because they're, they're two different things, and I just want to make sure we're clear.
Yeah. So, at this point, I would advocate for removing the item. So my motion would be that, that we remove, remove the item completely.
If I may ask a clarifying question, would that be both the north and the south segments?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think the impulse for this item is a good one. I'm not wedded to any particular alignment, but I recognize the desperate, desperate need for a Waxaw Parkway. And I personally support it. I think it would be a big mistake to try to kill the CTP. And again, I embrace the impulse of interested parties, stakeholders, getting together and trying to, you know, figure out an alignment that works for most people. But we've got to start at a place where you embrace the idea that we need a Waxaw Parkway. Sounds like we may not, we may not have that consensus, but I support it.
Commissioner Williams, do you have an opinion on the alignment, the, the newly proposed one, or the other one?
I, I'm not wedded to any particular alignment. I, I just, I want to see if we can gain some agreement from the different stakeholders. I mean, we've seen here five, six different alignments over the last 30-plus years. I mean, that's just, that's ridiculous, you know? And, you know, the traffic just gets worse and worse, and you have all this traffic that's headed right into downtown Waxaw. It's hurting business, it's hurting the character of the community, it's posing public safety issues, and, yeah, I'm not wedded to any particular alignment, but, you know, some alignment is going to upset some folks. I mean, whatever you land on, you're going to have some detractors, that's just the way it is. But we've, to my mind, we've got to be able to, you know, gain agreement on at least some route, some alignment, that is the least objectionable. Can we do that? I don't know, but that's what my impulse is to try to do.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Merrell.
I am inclined to support Commissioner Hales in removing this, because if this has not been figured out in 31 years, I don't know that it's a good project to figure out. It seems like they were on track of getting together every six years, but they moved the line every six years, except between 1998 and 2017, they just went on a 19-year hiatus and decided not to look at it at all. So, you know, that is many, many different opportunities over 31 years to get this figured out, and I would, I would really like to know what happened, you know, between 1992 and 2017. I don't know if we'll ever have those answers, but, I mean, the ideas have been all over the place. I mean, if you look at the presentation tonight, and to expect this board to mediate and figure out a 31-year problem, I think, is un- out a 31-year problem, I think, is unconscionable. And may, maybe Waxaw should have thought about this before they, you know, started doing all of this growth. You know, Waxaw knowingly created these problems, and I do not think it's fair for Mineral Springs and homeowners to suffer decisions made by another municipality. So I, I'm inclined to go along with Commissioner Hems on this, and just remove it. 31 years is enough.
Mr. Hanson, if we don't take a position on the alignment yet, appoint a board member to, as a representative for the meeting, does that, where does that make the project stand, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Sir, did you say that you, you wouldn't take an action, but you would appoint a member?
That's right. If we did not take an action on the alignment, but did appoint a member as far as meeting with the group.
Then hopefully, they will get together and come out with some mutually agreeable arrangement, and then they'll, that representative will bring it back to this board. This board can then vote on it.
And do you, do you know how much of that area there, and I'm looking at the map, that's in the unincorporated part of Union County?
Now, it's
Yes, sir.
Possibly only this portion here, on the south side of 75, and this portion on the east side of Waxaw Indian Trail Road.
Would you show me that again, please, sir? I'm sorry.
Right in here.
Okay.
And then down here.
Okay.
And I would note that the question from Commissioner Merrill about the, the period between 98 and 2017, that's the blue line, which is the pre-CTP. We just, I couldn't find an adoption date for when that was done. It was in the 2000s. So, we kept on the six-year schedule.
For what it's worth, I would like to go on the record and say I would stand with Commissioner Hems, Vice Chair Hems. And, and I, I hear Melissa, Commissioner Merrill, sorry, 32 years is enough. So I will stand with them.
Any further discussion or any motions?
Mr. Commissioner Hems did make a motion.
Any further discussion on Vice Chairman Hems' motion? All in favor of the motion indicate by? All opposed?
No.
No.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
If I may, did the board decide whether they want to have appointed a representative to the meeting?
They just, just to indicate that we don't support
Okay.
the alignment, or the actual project.
The next business agenda item is item 24255, the Union County Water CIP Workshop. Follow up, I'll recognize County Manager Brian Matthews for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I know it's late. Let's see what we've got here. So I think I just honestly just skipped to the real, the meat of it, and that is the rates, because actually that's what we're here to talk about. Much like the discussion with the, the bond decisions, you, you don't have to give us a decision tonight, but I do need a decision by May 6. We've got to build our budget. The board has got to give us some direction, so we can get this in front of you for a final decision. Obviously, the sooner the better. So you, you do have some time. May 6 could be another big meeting for you, depending on if you want to put it off. But ultimately, what you, what we boil down to is, you have a number of different scenarios here. And those all range from, if you want to do just the water-only projects, and that's the master plan of water projects, really deal with your, your fire, your flow, your fire flow, your pressure issues. Do you want to add a potential expansion of the Catawba Water Plant? That is expected to be needed in the very near future. Do you want to include sewer improvements for your master plan, as far as that, your sewer issues, or any sewer expansion? So the very bottom one, I'm just going to start with that, that is the one that includes every single thing. That's all water projects, that's all sewer projects. I, I don't think that's on the table, but I'm just letting you know, that's the one that has every single thing in it. And you show 11.75% sewer increase and a 7.25% water increase. And they range in between. I know the one that I heard some interest from, from the board, and I'm certainly not going to say that's what you'll vote for or not vote for, was C and D. C was a project, was the scenario that had all water projects related to just your, your fire flows and your pressure, no expansion of the Catawba Water Plant. So that 4.25% are only those master planned water projects, no expansion for water. And then the 6% for sewer were only your sewer projects related to your line sizes, no sewer expansion. You're not providing additional capacity for sewer. That was C. If you look at D, D had a rate increase of 7.25% for water. That one did include the Catawba Water Plant expansion. And that's, that's in that 28 timeframe, depending on how quickly Lancaster County Water and Sewer needs it. And then the 6%, again, for just your sewer projects, which are not expansion sewer projects. I'd like to answer any questions you might have, but really, that's what we're, we're really boiling down to, is, does the board have any inclination to consider any rate increases for your water and sewer utility in order to accommodate these various projects, be it water, sewer, or both? Any questions I can answer for you?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Brian, I've got a few questions. So, looking at scenario D, with, I mean, this would include everything that we already have in the works. It would also include our water master plan projects. I think, I appreciate you giving clarification on the sewer master plan project. So, so what we're dealing with here is, is again, not adding capacity on the sewer side. But what it does look to be adding capacity in is with our Catawba Water Plant.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
And so, you know, in our last meeting, we talked about this, and we haven't received anything imminent from our partners there with Lancaster.
We've not, not at this time.
But with the growth projections, we're looking at, what, maybe two, three years?
So we, we would anticipate that we would need to be in design in two years and in construction shortly after that. That's what, that's our anticipation.
Okay. And I mean, obviously, it's too, too soon to know, you know, how much capacity would be needed.
Absolutely.
But my, my question is, is, you know, if you're looking, you're comparing scenario C versus scenario D, you're looking at a difference of 3% on the water side.
Yeah.
So you, you're going from 4.25% to 7.25%. And, you know, my, I guess my question is, is the, the money that the county makes on the utility, that goes into what we call our enterprise fund.
Yes, sir.
And that's, that's a fund that is dedicated to, you know, water and sewer. And it helps us pay for R and R and, and some other capital projects.
Yes, sir.
So my question is, is that, and this is a big if, I mean, because there's not a motion out there, but if the board considers something like scenario D, would there be a way to, to take that 3% and kind of earmark that for Catawba expansion? So I mean, financially speaking, and, I mean, it's a good thing Beverly's still here. So I, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, is that, you know, when you, when we look at utility rates, and Lord knows we've looked at enough stuff with tax rates tonight, but, but when we look at utility rates, my concern is, is I do not want to, I, I don't want to sit there and tell the rate payers, you know, hey, we are increasing your rate by 7.25%, and we're just going to hold this money, you know, for potentially any other project that comes along, you know, comes along. I, I think that we need to, if we're going to look at a rate increase on the water side, I, I think we need to be transparent and say, okay, this is going to be intended for this project, and that's what we're going to use it for.
Sure.
So can you, you know, comment to that?
Yes, sir. Yeah, on, you know, on the sur, not on the surface, yes, we can do that. I want you to be aware, understand, though, these are estimates of costs. So what we don't know is what the true cost of these projects will be when it's, when it's time to do them. We don't know what the true cost of the Catawba will be when it's time to build it. So there may be an, an opportunity where some of these costs are more than what was anticipated, and the board's going to have to give us direction that we may have to use some of those funds to cover the fact that we were underestimated on those costs. Certainly, we can earmark that for those purposes, for the Catawba. Just recognize, these are all, they're educated guesses, but they're guesses. That's all they are at this point.
Sure. And if that, if a scenario such as that presented itself, then of course you and staff would bring that to the board, and then we would, you know, have to make a decision on that.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Couple of other questions for you, if you don't mind. I want to go into this scenario F, where, where of course that takes into consideration all of the sewer projects, and, you know, obviously, we're talking about huge rate increases on sewer till the end of time. Of course, I'm exaggerating, but at least 15 years.
A long time.
A long time, right. So if that, if that were to ever happen, if we ever, if this board or another board ever adopted or implemented a Site B, for example, my question is, do we have any information that would suggest that the Yadkin Water Plant right now would have enough capacity to service the growth that the Site B would, would potentially bring with it?
At this point in time, we do believe it could. Yes, sir. Now, obviously, that depends on how big you were to build Site B and that plant, based on the, the current sort of philosophy, at an 8 MGG up to 12, then we could accommodate that with the Yadkin Plant as it's permitted for.
Okay. And the reason why I'm bringing that up is because I, I think that we need to understand that there's a delicate balance
Yes.
you know, between water and sewer. And, and so I, I think that, you know, if, if we were to ever consider that, I wanted to be sure, you know, that we would not have to also consider a new, you know, water treatment plant
Right.
to service the domestic water needs of the residents.
Right. Now, obviously, the, the plant itself is planned to be expanded over time, so while we have, I believe, 23 MGD of total permitted capacity, we're not building 23 MGD today. We're building about 12. So it's an expansion over time is what we would do.
Okay. Last couple of questions, I promise. So at our last meeting, we talked a little bit about system development fees. So, you know, if we adopt a rate schedule such as scenario D, we should be able to increase our system development fees. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. So obviously, we don't know today what that would look like.
Right.
But how soon could we get some modeling on that? Should we make a decision to adopt, you know, one of these scenarios that may add capacity to the, to the Catawba?
Sure.
Because that, that's the real, that's the real key to it, right? Because it's a, it's a formula that we have to go by.
It is.
And so when you take on capital projects such as a Catawba expansion, then it allows you to charge more money for your, your system development fees.
That's correct. So your, your study has to be done at a minimum every five years. You can do it as often as you like, just to pay for it, obviously, and we have consultants to do that work for us. We just finished one, so we have that in place. I would suggest that if the board were to make a decision, and it had any expansion for capacity, whether it be water, sewer, or whatever, that we would look at having our consultants start on that study sometime in the summer, have that to you. It would take several months, and then we would adopt that likely by the next fiscal year, by 2025, and put that in place by 2025. That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
And it is likely, and I'm not an expert, it is likely to change that for water, at least, and potentially an increase in system development fee for water. Maybe not so much for sewer, because what you're doing with sewer is you're not really increasing capacity, and that's where your big dollars come from. You're really increasing more of the, the efficiency of the system. I don't know that you'd gain much on sewer, to be honest with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Merrill.
Do you mind going to the slide that converts this to what homeowners can expect? Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. And that is monthly, so those numbers there are what the monthly amount or addition would be for an average user of 5,500 gallons. Obviously, there are some folks who use a lot less, and some who use a lot more. Yes, sir.
Do you remember back in 2022, when we had a similar decision come before the board then?
I do.
And that board, I think four to one, adopted a rate schedule of 7% increases over five years.
Yes, sir.
And then in the subsequent years, I think it was 1.75, 1.5. I'm not 100% sure of that.
I think 1.75.
1.75. And that was pretty much for the kitchen sink option, if I'm not mistaken.
The only thing that did not include, because I do want to make sure that's clear, it did not include the master planned items, because that was not finished at the time.
Right. But it, it includes certainly everything in D and E and
That is correct.
You know? So I'd just like to point that out, because this, ladies and gentlemen, is the cost of delay. You know, we've had a lot of inflation the last two years, the prices of labor and materials are only going up. And, you know, I remember back in 2022, some of us got excoriated pretty good for a 7% increase. So I just think that's an important reminder.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Merrill.
Isn't that the same increase where for two or three years, some residents would get a 22% increase and then go back to the 7% increase? I'm, I'm almost positive that that's the plan that's being discussed.
There was a, there was a rebalancing, yes, ma'am. And so water customers would receive an, an additional increase, which I believe added up to almost 22% that first year.
Mm-hmm.
And then sewer customers had a small, smaller adjustment, and then over time, it went back to 7%. You're correct.
So I think it was because some customers got this increase, another set of customers got this increase, another set of customers got this increase, and then in a year or two, the 22% increases would get converted back to the 7% increases. And, and it, it, it wasn't, in my opinion, balanced or fair
So the 7% was included.
For the non-sewer customers.
So the 7% was included in that 22%? So if you were to look at that 7% increase, it was over a five-year period? It was included in that first year? There was an additional, like, 14% on top of that, which was to balance that water? But you're correct, it was 22% for those water customers.
So it wasn't as clean as what we're seeing here, because it was staggered.
It was, you're correct.
But just for clarity's sake, the rebalancing and the 7% increase in the rate schedule over five years, those are two different things.
They, they are different things, yes, sir.
Right, right. And the 7% increases over five, each year over five years, that was meant to pay for the capital projects we were presented, which was perhaps short of the kitchen sink. The rebalancing was more of an equity operation, and, you know, against it, for it, you know, good people can differ in terms of what sewer and water customers should be paying. But I just want to make sure, you know, for clarity's sake, the rebalancing and the 7% increases in the rate schedule are two totally different things.
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Brian, and what, the, the rate schedule that David's referring to, that would have financed, you know, Site B as well.
That's correct. Site B was included in that. Site B was included in that 7%.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure. So, so yeah, and, and I mean, obviously, we, we know now that, you know, Site B, the scope of that project has changed significantly since they looked at it in '22.
It has, yes, sir.
You know, with news of, you know, problems where, where discharge had to be moved and had to be piped, you know, further downstream.
Certainly.
So, you know, again, I guess what I'm trying to say is, is that, you know, we can sit here and we can look and say, okay, well, you know, well, we did this, or we did that, and, and then it would have cost us less. But I think that in reality, what we should say and what we should understand is, is that projects like a Site B change, and the cost of those things change. So, you know, should, I, I think that when they were planning that in '22, we were looking at considerable low, considerably lower cost for that project than, well, probably what it would have turned out to be now, knowing what we do now, today.
The estimate was significantly lower. Yes, sir. It was.
Okay. And so, you know, I'm inclined, as we look at this, I'm, I'm still inclined to support C and D. I'm also inclined to, well, I'm, I'm really more so inclined to support D. And, and the reason why I say that is because Scenario D includes, you know, building a rate schedule that would help finance the capital cost and expense for the Kataba. And I, I think that we all need to understand that the Kataba is crucial, you know, to our water here in the county. And the other thing that I'd like to note is, is that, you know, we've talked a lot about growth. This is certainly a part of, of growth as well. But, you know, one thing that I've always been an advocate against was putting the burden of future growth on the backs of the ratepayers. And, and so I, I, I have a significant issue with that. But as I look at this, Scenario D would not necessarily accommodate additional sewer capacity.
Correct.
So we're not subsidizing future growth, per se, with sewer capacity with this scenario. In fact, what we're doing is, we were, we would be addressing significant shortfalls that we would be predicting in the future with system pressures. And, well, we're also talking about a safety thing here, you know, with fire prevention. And you're supplying a basic need that would hopefully shore up our utility for years to come, if I understand correctly, based off of our prior discussion with the needs of the water side.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. County Manager, what's the big difference between Scenario C and D? C and D?
C and D?
Yes, sir.
The, the difference is the Kataba Regional Plant Expansion, which is the water plant expansion. That's a over $100 million expansion estimate. So that's why you have that additional 3% to be able to cover that debt service and that cost over the timeframe of building and operating that.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to echo some of the things Commissioner Helms was saying about the importance of the Kataba. Currently, as it stands now, we have to buy, you know, extra water from Lancaster to meet our needs in the western part of the county. And, you know, Lancaster has been a fair and generous partner with us and has allowed us to purchase that extra water, because by default, everything we do with Lancaster is a joint venture, so it's 50/50. But they've been, you know, good partners, and, and they've been generous, and they've allowed us to buy this extra water. And, you know, but they're growing too. And they may not be able to do, continue to do that in the near future. So I just want to echo Commissioner Helms's comments on the importance of the Kataba, the importance of that relationship. We've had a fantastic working relationship with Lancaster, and for that to continue, you know, we've got to be partners in these big capital decisions. So I just wanted to echo what Commissioner Helms was saying there.
Commissioner Buck.
Yes, the, the importance of water, I don't think can be overstated. Was visiting with a couple that's dear friends of us this past week, who just, who lost her house to a fire recently. And during that time, they had to move, they had to shift the trucks for, to different hydrants due to pressure issues. So I would be inclined to support anything we can to, to ensure we have good water pressure and good flow.
Certainly.
Well, my dear colleagues, could we decide on this tonight so we don't have to bring it back to the May 5th meeting, which may be, may be very, very heavy on the meeting.
I do want to, I do want to make a few little clarifications, obviously. Understand that what is also built into this, and it, it really has very little impact, because the number is not a high number, is the, the issue with the Judicial Center and the Operations Center. Understand that they are integral to each other. If we are going to do an expansion for the Judicial Center, we have to have a place to move out our public works folks. And so that, that, that's built into this. And so I'd, I'd want to make sure everyone understands that, that is part of this, because they are integral to each other. The other part of it is, there is no short line program in this. Now, what I would suggest you consider is, we do anticipate that there will be some savings from the current program. We're thinking somewhere in the $2 to $3 million range, based on the projects that we have that will, that the board has said yes to. I would suggest that we take those savings, we build that into a 25 program, we'd call it the 25 program, we put out applications here in July or August, somewhere in that timeframe, and we use that money to fund it for that year. And then you talk about what you want to do with that program in the future. That would be my suggestion. That wouldn't create any change to this, we would just use savings that we already have in that fund. But I wanted to make those clarifications so everybody knew what we were dealing with.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brian, I, I appreciate that, and I agree completely with that. And, you know, as I look at this, I mean, you've got to think, I mean, unless we make significant investments on our water side, we may not have, you know, the capacity to do the short line in the future. So, so no, I, I agree with that. And, and it seems as though we've got some general consensus on the board. So, you know, I'll go ahead and I'll make the motion that we adopt Scenario D, and, and that we also utilize the savings from previous short line water extension programs to, well, to fund a FY25 short line program as well.
Can I ask for clarification? As shown here, this would show rate increases for the next one, two, three, four years. We would ask that you consider that, because honestly, it doesn't work without those rate increases over that entire span. So I'd, I'd ask for clarification, do you mean that those increases per 2025 all the way through 2028?
Correct. So to clarify my motion, as shown here, from FY25 through FY28.
Okay, thank you.
And I would also add to that motion that, that the funds, the 3%, approximately 3%, be earmarked for the Kataba.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any discussion on the Vice Chairman's motion?
I support it, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor of Vice Chairman Helms' motion indicate by aye.
Aye.
Hallelujah, we got a decision like that. Thank you. Thank you very much, Board members. I really do appreciate that.
I was about to add something to it, but I'm like, no, we're gonna. Don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good.
I hope so. I will now recognize the County Manager for his comments.
Oh, wow, we're at the end now.
Generally, I have none, but I actually have some comments tonight. I'm sorry about that. So just a couple of things, I want to make you aware that we are going to have an opening on April the 19th of our new Southwest Regional Library, so just be aware of that. There are a few things that are going on with that. It officially opens on the 19th at 9:00 a.m. They'll also have a grand opening celebration on April 20th at 10:00 a.m. It's at 1515 Cuthbertson Road in Waxaw, it's next to the Cuthbertson Middle School. It's approximately 19,000 square feet. And also want to say a very big thank you to the Union County Library Foundation for raising $822,000 for books, amenities, technology. They've done an amazing job, and they also recently got approved for a grant from Weddington to help with some additional equipment that'll be on that site. So I want to say that. Also want to, and I want to give a shout out to Commissioner Merrill, she sent something to us related to a veterans documentary, and, and Liz and her staff has been working on this. So we have a veterans documentary screening and support services event on May the 2nd. That will be, it's a sort of a joint project between the county and the city, and we're collaborating on that. That will be a free event scheduled again for May 2nd at 7:00 p.m. at the Dowd Center Theater, that's here in Monroe. The event will collude free resources and information to support veterans and their families, and we'd just like to, you know, be able to give a, you know, thanks to all our folks for serving and what we can do to help on that. So again, thank you for making us aware of that. And I am done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. County Manager. I'll now recognize the individual commissioners for their comments. We'll have Commissioner Clancy Balkum start us off tonight.
Well, it seems like I came, it seems like I came on the board at the right time. We have plenty to talk about. I just hope everybody has a safe trip home, and has a good evening. That's all I have.
Commissioner David Williams.
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Melissa Merrill.
No comments tonight.
Commissioner, Vice Chairman Brian Helms.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as always, thanks to our staff for pulling a long one today. Beverly, thank you for the presentation that you had. I know we've still got some big decisions to make there, but, but thank you for bringing that information forward. To the folks in the county, I'll say this, that yes, we do have some big decisions. We started taking some of those decisions into account tonight, we've still got some more to do. And I assure you that nobody up, up on this board takes any of those decisions lightly. So the county's going to be just fine, we're going to be okay, and so will our residents. So with that, thank you all, and have a good night.
I reiterate what the Vice Chairman said. This regular meeting, thank you all who attended. I move that, the board adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.